It's under notices and I'm looking under notices.
I looked under, I just clicked on calendar and linked to it from the calendar.
Okay, I'll do that on Friday.
I didn't, how you doing? I didn't see.
Okay, I'm clicking here, download packet. Okay, now packet is on the calendar, he's right.
So the hyperlink wherever it was, it's in the HTML and the other place is not.
Jeremy left and that's what happens.
I know.
I don't understand.
Oh, Jeremy's texting me right now.
He's watching us, he's hearing it all.
He said, "You're live."
Jeremy leaves and we lose it all. Tell him can't leave on vacation except after, after commission meetings.
He said, "Well, Brandon said he would be here tonight for the meeting."
Nice, nice.
Can I get this right or you can?
No, it's fine. I try not to eat when I'm in my meeting. So whenever there are questions coming in. Whenever there are questions. They're from yours?
Yes. I'm gonna need to double check with you guys tonight if you guys are okay with me working, kind of going back and forth, working here two weeks and then there's another one week. Can I come back here two weeks?
Yeah, but I know where she places her little personal. Jeremy, you talking to Mauricio?
Was I supposed to?
Did he send you anything?
Yeah, somebody.
Unless it's Garrett. That's for our, for our. Yeah, that's, when I saw that, I thought, huh? Are you sure? No.
Well, whoever talked about it, we talked about work session. He wanted to be in the work session. I don't know if it even happened.
Well, we have that on.
Okay, I've never been.
There he is. Well, good, we were just talking about you. I thought you were coming next Monday. Okay, well, that's good then. I'm glad you guys got it worked out. Otherwise, I would. Trying to make sure I got the right book. I'm glad you got a lot of them, a bunch of those.
Yeah, I do have a bunch of those. Fortune girls.
How's it going? No mic tonight.
No what tonight?
Mic.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Glad I got someone else to cover my other hearing. There's he.
Uh, he's kind of, he's working in Logan. He's got a pretty big deal where the whole company comes in and he's kind of organizing. Transportation and. Oh, yeah, yeah. Is that on the agenda? No, I think, um, you know, it's gonna look at it this year, so. Although I told him to go ahead. Don't let it back off. Yeah, so. Yeah, it's just. Oh, no, 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 no. She might have, I'll check my inputs just to see if she's. Sorry, she says she's. All right, I think we better get started in order to get finished, so. Yes.
That's a five. So right now it's just a work session.
All right, I think we better get started. It is, um, 4:08. We have got present commissioners, factual commissioner McConnell and commissioner Anderson. This is a work session. Welcome, everybody. We'll have our work session from this time until approximately 5:00 and then we'll have the commencement of our normal commission meeting at that time. On our agenda for our work session, we have Mauricio Melendez to discuss the website. Are you ready to go, Mauricio?
Yeah. So, um, what I wanted to talk to you about as well was what we discussed was showing the difference between the management section for social media and the marketing and how it all works together with the website. So, one of the things that we were, do you guys have Apple TV now?
Yes. Nice. So you can show it right up there.
Okay, so last time we talked to you guys about what the brand kit was and how everything will be, if it's government related, community events, general management, tourism, economic development. Oh, thank you, Mauricio.
I'm gonna say it's, there you go. That's good.
So, this is what we showed last time, talking about the different ways everything's color-coded to show, um, the public what the messaging is going to be about. Now, one of the things we wanted to go through is show what's the difference between the social media marketing and social media management and how it integrates to the site. So, with social media and marketing, it's about getting all the information, your content out to your target audience. Whether it's to, whatever its purpose may be, here to show new sales leads, increase your followers. Where the management portion comes in, it's the laundry. It is what creates awareness. It is what produces more information out there. You'll notice this from a couple examples. So how this helps is through the different platforms, the purpose is to push users and content back to your website. So if we create a, um, so, you know, the whole broadband, getting the survey out to the general public to be able to take this. Well, if we just put a post about what, hey, come take the survey about broadband, you know, we can make it so it's clickable, they click on it, takes them to the survey. What we want to do is push people directly to the website. So that way they can click on it, takes them to where it resides on your guys' website. Because when it comes to Google and how all of their web crawlers work, because you guys have a .gov at the end of your website, it actually, you actually have, are a source of factual information. So not everybody can have a .gov. So if you have your information posted on your site, then it produces more trust in what is being said. What we don't want to have happen is something like the follower. So Chase Bank, they decided to come out with something for Monday motivation and it says, you can read it here, you know, why is, by balance, although the bank make coffee at home, you know, just detailing what somebody's expenditures are. Well, this didn't go over really well for Chase Bank and then what the president of Chase Bank did was even worse. So they got huge, huge backlash. So this is where it's very important as to what the messaging is and tell the people where they need to go, what they need to do in order to get more information. So after everybody commented and ridiculed what they had done on Twitter, they came out with, you know, our Monday motivation is to get better at Monday motivation tweets because of the backlash that happened. This is, we want to prevent that type of stuff. Here is an example of what we'd be looking to do. So here, Google talks about one of the greatest mysteries of the Great Barrier Reef are the blue holes and how it can give research a red book. But if you notice, it pushes them directly to, it pushes them directly to a site where it holds the information. Because as every human being on earth, the majority of them, if we're scrolling through social media, if all you have is text, 90% of the time you're not even on media. But if there's a visual and then it leads to something that has more information for you, then you're more likely to click on it, you're more likely to go on to see what it is that is trying to get information for you. The way that the content would flow is you guys need to get information out to the public. Okay? Content is created for social. If it's something quick and informative or you just want it to be a clickable link to take somebody somewhere, great, it just sends them over. If you need them to have more, it's more in-depth information on what it is that's going on, then this is where the content is created for social, the content pushes the users to a specific place on your website and then the users stay informed and has government resources they can go back to again and again and again. And then that way, instead of having to, let's say you guys are talking about, you know, let's go back to the broadband, instead of having to continuously put posts out about broadband, you can actually just modify what is on the current page of the website that sits on your domain and you don't have to flood the social media marketplace with the same information. And then people do, people get tired of it. I mean, goldfish have longer attention spans than the average human being does nowadays. So this is where, this is how.
Do you have the data to back that up?
Actually, I can get. But this is how it integrates the social media, marketing, management and the website. So you have three living or dynamic sources of information that can all push either content directly to the public or push the public to go to your site to get even more information.
So basically, you're trying to push, uh, not just our stuff we want you to push, you're gonna be able to push people to come back to the website, back to our website and you're gonna have basically those that want to have a lit, I mean, be on the list that constantly get the information and those that request information and then they get on this list, whatever it is.
Yeah, so then what ends up happening is currently with your guys' website, anytime somebody goes in and at the bottom right, there's a subscribe box. Anytime somebody puts an email in for me, an email in there, then they get added to a list. Well, if they want specific information or if they want to contact you guys or a department, they can actually just hit the contact us, the drop down, choose which department it goes to and they will go directly to that department. If you guys want it to, so as this email list grows, in the background is where, you guys have heard of MailChimp, Constant Contact, those type of programs. Well, in the back of your current website, there is a program that's similar to that except it's on steroids, but it's not being used. So that program, if you guys wanted to send an email out to everyone, and that's why, that's why the privacy policy that sits on there describes what the information is gonna be used for. So if you guys want to get information out to everybody that sits on that email list, all that has to be done is an email's created, it hits, it's submitted, the campaign goes out to everyone and it comes from, even though it's going through, um, this third-party app, it actually shows that it's coming from whichever department or individual you want it to come from. So if you want it to come from one of your guys' emails, it'll show from and then they, all that they see is from, who it's, who you guys designated that the email comes from and then all of the content. And within that email, you can have, if you want it to have images, if you want it to have clickable links that people can click on there and it goes to somewhere else, it can all do that. Plus, it'll provide you analytics of, okay, is this really working? How many people actually opened the email? How many people read the email? How many people? It'll actually tell you how long somebody has been on the email reading. It'll tell you if they clicked on the link. Any action that, any actionable item that you want them to take action on in the email, it records all of that and provides you the analytics so you can tell whether it was successful or not. If you're only getting, you know, 2% open rate, then it's not doing successful. It's not, it's not doing its job. But it also checks to make sure that it's not, um, the spam blockers, everything so it should go through and get to the people that you want it to be.
So how do, what information and who would be putting that information out there?
So that's where our team can do that for you or you can teach somebody and train somebody how to do that. Cause it's, right now, we have, like, the local football team, they use that software to disperse information out to all of the players' parents. Then we have other companies who either to disperse news, that is to disperse sales, to disperse any information to their email list. So we can teach and train somebody how to do it and it's really, really simple. We give them a login, the only thing they have access to is yours, is your list. They don't have access to anybody else's list because we, we run the same software with quite a few different entities.
And that's directed to people in Morgan County, for those that sign up on that list.
Whoever signs up on that list. And then if you have lists of individuals or people who have signed up through different means, um, we can actually import those lists that will sit onto any folder that you guys want to have designated. The only thing we need to know is how those names will obtain, just to make sure that we're following GDPR rules and everything so that way it doesn't, it doesn't get in trouble.
So if the clerk wanted to send out an update on election information or a reminder to vote?
Yeah. In fact, that's a great, um, so one of the things that would happen is, why don't we train the clerk how to do that? So that way she can send the reminders out and it's just a couple clicks and writing it out. And if she doesn't want to write it, if she doesn't want to write it, just let us know what content you want to have on there and then our team can develop the artwork, can develop whatever needs to be. And then we just put it in and she can just hit submit and it goes to everybody on that list. And then what we would also do is correlate that with social media, because you're gonna have people who, I mean, one of the best forms of, um, in advertising, one of the best ways to get information out to people is, second way is email. As much as people think that maybe antiquated email is still one of the strongest producers of replies and responses when it comes to getting information to a general public.
And that, that's already in existing capacity, we just haven't used it.
Yeah. And then as far as the management for the website, we just act as support for your guys' current IT department. So Jeremy and Brandon have taken over a lot of the, um, so now that anybody submits anything to be uploaded to the website, as far as like agenda minutes, um, anything like that, it, we have it set up so now Jeremy and Brandon can get an notification to their phones and they know when something has been submitted and then they go in there and upload it for everyone. And if they need help with anything, Jeremy and Brandon both can wait to just contact us and goes, hey, can we fix this or can we do this? Then we just hop on, get it done for them and then they continue to do what their responsibilities are.
So do we still use the little black?
Yeah.
Even at the bottom of it?
Yeah, you still use that because what happens to that, when you upload that in the background on our end, it actually sorts everything. So that way, if we need, if you guys asked us for, um, an agenda from, you know, when we started putting everything in there, it actually has it sorted out, decides what's already outlined, it has it sorted out in a different folder. So that way, if somebody were to hack into the website, which is, I mean, it does happen, but knock on wood, we haven't had it happen to any clients. Then automatically, we have a backup for all of those. So that way, if anything happens, they're already backed up on the cloud. So that way we can always access it.
So the other day Jeremy said to me, why don't you just go ahead and shoot that over, you know, just email to me, Julian, I'll, I'll put it right up for you. And I said, well, I feel like I need to go through the website just to make sure that there's that history, you know, there's proof that I requested it. And so I did, I did both, you know, but I don't know how to repost it, if that makes anything.
No, I mean, if you send it to him, he'll still be able to go and post it. The difference is that if you send it through the little black icon, it stores it in multiple locations just for backup purposes, plus he gets a notification. So that way, if, you know, he's bombarded with a ton of emails, then it's always gonna, and it has a timestamp, has when it was sent, who, if, which department it's for and the file is attached in that message. And the nice thing about the way we have it set up that way, and we specifically chose this program is because in today's world, people are employed and unemployed, you know, on these notice. Well, because this stuff sits on the cell phone, if we, if you guys pull us through to revoke someone's access, then it doesn't matter if they have the app installed, it only works with the app installed. It doesn't matter if they try to access the app and we revoked their permissions, everything that was on there pertaining to that account is gone. So they no longer have any access to it. But it's just a security measure that we do, uh, for all of our clients, just because the fluidity that happens in today's workforce.
I have a little bit of a tangent question on. So is there a way we can set up on our agenda minutes that we can just do a search, um, Mountain Green and then, and then it tells you which agendas, Mountain Green was discussed?
Yes, so we actually, we're working with a company right now who's helping us create the widgets that anytime, so this is another reason why the upload through that form is very important because there, the widget that's being created actually reads through every single PDF that's uploaded and it categorizes all the words. So if you type in "the," you're probably gonna get a million documents. But if you type in "Mountain Green Water District" or something like that, then it will just pull up everything that just has those words in the document. So we're almost, they're almost done having that developed for us and we should have that implemented here, not at our place. It's just one that we have them create proprietary to us.
So maybe in one of the department head meetings, we ought to discuss this capacity. I mean, I think there are different departments that could send out notifications, even, you know, the fire department could send out a notice with respect to fire safety as we move through the summer and have the drought conditions and.
And a given texting capability. So if anyone has put in that phone number and given permission, so it's a double opt-in, has given permission to receive texts, the same software, they can go in there and choose whether they want it to text or email or both. And they can go to everyone who's on that list.
No.
By the way, I can still see it.
Is Garrett gonna be included in every communication?
I mean, he can, if he wants to.
Is there a silencing feature?
Yes, delete.
I guess I say that in jest, but I, I guess one thought also is that I, I don't know, I'd be a little bit worried if, we have a multiple people that can, maybe it's training.
Yeah.
That, that, you know, can submit whatever they want and well, wait a minute, that wasn't said correctly or done correctly or heaven forbid, the attorney looks at it and goes, whoa, 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 guys, you can't be doing that. So I just, maybe training, but.
And that's, and if you guys want, we can put in safeguards or we can, we can manage the routing of what happens once information is received or before information is dispersed, we can actually manage the routing as to where it goes. So let's say, you know, somebody's gonna put some, they wanna put something out to the community from one of the department heads and you need to make sure that it goes through like Garrett or one of your guys' profiles, then we can have it so it hits either one first and then as soon as you hit approve, then it, it's pretty much like putting a gate, as soon as you hit approve, then it opens the gate and allows it to continue on.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for Mauricio?
So are we gonna go ahead and try to, uh, put this into our, our meeting next month or this month for our department heads or are we gonna wait until we approve something?
Oh, what do we need to approve? This is already existing, this is just in form.
No, this is actually, this is the communications package or the communications port of, part of the website which we have not paid for yet. So we have not paid for this part, we need to pay for it if we're gonna do it.
Is that correct?
Correct, this is part of the communications.
Oh, I didn't know.
And so maybe to just direct it a little bit more to what we talked about in my office is you were gonna break down the costs. That was my understanding is you're gonna present for like 10 minutes, Q and A, break down costs and then if the commission decides to move forward with a direction, then you and I would work on a contract that could come back on the 21st.
I thought it was part of the existing, sorry.
Yeah, so as far as the cost goes, for the social media management and the social media marketing is each of them are $500 a month is what we charge all of our clients. For the integration of the email, so currently we have this, we integrate this in the backend to all the websites we build, just as it's a component that the majority of our clients always push towards. And that is an additional $350 a month. Now, if it's all paid, uh, in one sum, there are discounts for everything. It also includes training, uh, the integration from the website to be able to have everything workflow together, that's just part of what we do. And that's why when we build websites, you always need it open for being able to add more features, be able to create and have these things in later on if clients desire that. But those are the initial costs for getting all of that set up.
Is this an amendment to an existing contract then?
No, so the previous contract, we talked about that, uh, last time when M and I met and the previous contract would stay in place until June of this year. And it would be, what we were, what we negotiated was it'll be at the rate that you guys originally paid for. So it's not the current rate. So it's not the current rate that we have, so it's the old rate that we have for the original contract that we had.
So do we have a clause in that contract to extend?
We don't, and in fact, it's not even a contract, it was a proposal that was submitted, but that's the only evidence that we have. And so in our discussion, I just explained that under contract law, you continue with the current until something new is agreed upon. And, and so I think that part of what we wanted to look at today is what would be the ongoing...
Yeah, so, and I can answer that, so the ongoing would be being able to provide support for Jeremy. So if he needs help with something, little modifications here and there, great. But everything else, we would have to have it through a new contract.
So for the website currently, you are not getting paid on a monthly basis, or you're on?
But we talked about, because the commission said, we'll get you paid for what you did, so we're working out, and we just thought we'd do it at the same time, that if you decide what you want for the maintenance package going forward, that we could bill out under the old agreement, what's been covered, and then the new package would start coming on a monthly or quarterly, whatever basis that's discussed.
So from procurement, would we need to put that out to bid, or could we do a sole source, or what's the thoughts on that?
So, the, the sole source idea here is that because the website is created by Blue Spider Media, that having someone come in...
Completely redoing a new website.
They would be starting from scratch, and so currently, if I'm remembering this correctly, I think the maintenance package originally was quoted at 1344 a year, which ends up being 121 a month, is that right? Going forward, the maintenance package would be 450 a month. And, and so if that's what the commission wants, then we would move that forward. And I know that at some point, you said Jeremy could probably handle, and maybe it's not an ongoing thing forever, but if we start incorporating other things that are being presented, then it would make sense probably to keep that going long-term as well.
Yeah, and that's the one, like, where costs start to go down and start to narrow, is the more that we train, like, team members to be able to do stuff. So, and with the maintenance of the website, like I said, we're just a backup, so if, you know, one month Jeremy doesn't need our help, and there's no, there's, we don't see any need for you guys to pay us to maintain that month if there was no assistance required in order to provide maintenance, if that makes sense.
No, it doesn't. So, because you're also hosting, right? You have costs that are coming out, and so I think that...
Well, and hosting is separate from, hosting is $143 a year. So you guys pay for hosting every year, independently. Where the maintenance cost is, is if Jeremy needs our help to, so for example, they were working on something and they deleted a section of the website. So he contacted us, like, how can I get this back? Well, we went back in, we went back to one of the revisions prior to it being deleted, re-uploaded everything, and it was good to go.
So I guess the thought I have is if this is all described in your contract, I think for, we could look at it and make sure it looks good and we understand it, but it does make sense that some costs would be monthly or ongoing, and other costs at an hourly rate, this is what we can do to help.
Yeah, and in the contract, we do have a, an hourly rate for emergency services, we also have a rate for new pages. So if somebody, if a department wants a new page, then there's a cost for that. If it goes, there's a cost up to seven pages. If it goes above seven pages, then it's a $1,500 design fee, because then it's pretty much rebuilding the website within a website. And we do have a couple departments that we're working on to get their stuff built out, but it's still waiting for information.
So I'm gonna sound a little naive here, but do we, do we have a copy of your contract?
Yes.
Yes, it's the one we had from April 5th.
From April 5th?
Yes, the packet of April 5th, because I'm looking at it right now.
So is this an add? So what you just described right now would be an add to that contract?
Yeah, this would, this would be your communications plan.
It's actually part of the stuff we were looking at before. There was three parts that we looked at before, and it's on, I can't tell you what page, because I don't know.
But all of this is in the contract that we sent to you guys.
Got it.
This is just more detail of how it works. And then what we would have to do is, we can submit it to Garrett again with the verbiage that talks about, because the only ongoing cost that you guys have to have for your website, no matter what, is your hosting. But again, that's $143 a year. The other cost, which is the maintenance, is any time that we're called, that are, you guys need our help to either fix something...
It's not our, their fault. If it's their fault, they gotta take care of it.
Yeah, anything that's our fault, we're not gonna charge you that money, but...
Am I understanding, though, that the 450 a month, so that is separate from the 143 a year?
Yes.
And that's for the ongoing maintenance? But if you only get one call that month, is it, so is it, that's what you're projecting it is, or that's the flat fee?
That's the flat fee.
Okay.
So you've got 143, 450, and the two 500s.
Well, the two 500s here is a month, though.
Correct. So that's what I'm talking about, the actual month cost would be the 143, the 450, and the two 500s.
No, the 143 is a...
That's an annual.
Oh, that's annual.
That's annual.
Okay.
Yeah, so the other ones are 500, 500, the 350, and the 450 is any, if our services are required to provide any maintenance on the website. So you guys could possibly do like three months without needing any of that.
So basically, just hold everything for three months, and then on the, the fourth month, we bombard you.
No, because then it's gonna take longer to fix.
I mean, I wonder if we could structure it differently.
I mean, I would do it as a flat rate for whatever we need for maintenance in a given time.
And we can do, we can, we can create a flat rate with discounts in order to, you know, make it so it's better for everyone home.
So in this section that I've got here in front of me, you have like, says website management includes a page, updates, approximately 10 hours a week, 380 per month, or 4522 per year.
Yeah.
Is that different than 500, or what?
So that, right there is the maintenance, what the 500s are, is social media marketing, social media management, and then the email component is the piece of email.
And that's per month, so it's 1,000.
Yeah, 1350 a month for those three.
So we're making amendments to a contract that hasn't been approved yet.
Right. Actually, we're gonna make...
So, let me flip, let me flip that.
This is the work session.
Agreed, agreed.
And we're talking about entering into a new contract based upon a sole sourced website.
I guess the suggestion I would have is, let's get this agreement on the agenda as soon as possible and get moving forward. I just, I don't like the, the, the fact that you're managing whatever management you're doing currently with the website, and we're not paying for that, so.
Well, so the fundamental question is, do we want to move forward with the website management, with the communication, social media communication elements at either 1350 a month or 1450 a month? I'm losing track of the numbers as we talk about.
Well, we can, I can send it over to you with more clarification on the maintenance per month, and if you wanna do a flat rate for that, then we can provide that with all, with a different discount.
I just think, I think one of the things that we get criticized for is our lack of communication. I don't mind doing this and paying for the social media communication element of it as long as it's used, you know?
Well, and so to that point, one of the things that we do, and we do this with all of our clientele, is we will, when it comes to social media, we have the companies and the departments that we speak, that we need to get information from. Because, for example, we have one client who, he comes in once a year, pays his bill, and we don't see him for a year. But we're constantly talking to his team, his office, to either get us content, or if they need us to go out and take images, drones, video, anything like that, we go out there so that we can get all the content from them. Besides, we subscribe to your five major image, video, sound, so everything that we put out on social media is licensed. Nothing would be infringement, any copyrights, nothing would, nothing would be able to get in trouble for having it out there, because it's not...
Stock image providers. So, I, go ahead.
My view is that we ought to move forward and get the contract and...
And then ratify it, or not ratify it, but discuss it then.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm in support of moving forward with the proposal.
I am in support of it, too.
Agreed.
We, we need it for the transparency of our constituents. They need, they need to be able to say, yes, I know that that is going on, or yes, we did get the packet, we did get the notification that the packet went out, they did get the internet, you know, the test by Utah, or whatever it was.
And that's one of the things where now you're gonna have multiple sources to, unless you have an agenda that goes out, not only is it gonna be on the website, but then there's going to be a post that links directly to the agenda itself, so you now have, okay, we have proof to the public that it was posted, we have proof on our website through the upload of the timestamp of when it was posted and sent to be posted. So you have multiple layers with timestamps of information that's dispersed, so people can know, like, oh yeah, it was also on social media, it was on the website, and it all links to each other.
Great.
Okay, if there's no other further questions or comments, thank you, Mauricio.
So go forward.
We, sorry.
You want him to go forward, let me, let me explain one more thing within this. We were talking with them and our Vista Works. Vista Works is working on media, the same kind of stuff, but theirs is going outside our county. What he's gonna be doing is inside the county. So in other words, Vista Works is out pushing out Morgan County to the whole world, to let them know we exist, so that way they'll come here, recreate, spend their money, and go home. That's the main goal. Where he is, taking care of the people inside the city, the county, that lets them know what's going on. If there's an event down at the airport that, you know, is for the use, like they did last year, where they gave flying, flying things, this is what his program would be doing.
They did it again like two Saturdays ago, but I don't think...
See, and I didn't know about it either.
I mean, I lived there, and I didn't get notification until I was driving home on Saturday and I saw the sign for airport parking. I'm like, oh, they must be doing it.
Yeah, yeah, and see, and that would've been nice.
And that's one of the cool things that, the way that it works is, your community and your help, your people who don't reside in Morgan County, the messaging is very different. So your community is going to care about, you know, proposals, about agenda items, are gonna care about all the decisions that you guys are making. Outside of the community, I mean, I'm not really, it doesn't really bother me whatever Utah County does, because it doesn't really affect me right now.
Yeah, for instance, if, like, the truck pulls that are coming up, or the auto show that's coming up, he would do the promoting here in town, or in the county, and Vista Works is sending it out.
Yeah.
So...
We do all the digital stuff within the county. And if you guys have any questions, my office is right on Commercial Street, and I'm always there. And if I'm not there, I'm guiding people on the river. So you can join me on the river.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Mauricio.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Joey, we got about 15 minutes.
All right, so let's just hit on the nepotism then and see if we can at least get it out. As you can see with what we have in our existing handbook is very short, half-page long, very simplistic and easy to do whatever you want, basically, with that short little verbiage on nepotism, which is only a quarter of a page long. What we were recommending is, you know, three pages, and covers a lot of areas and makes it more detailed. So I don't know if you guys have time to read over it, if you guys wanna take time right now, and see if we could actually initiate this to our handbook and take out anything you don't want to hear.
If I can find my notes, I have a few notes that I have a question of. One of them was on temporary employees.
In this section?
In one of these sections.
And there's an exception for temporary employees with respect to the policy in this.
Yeah. And then there was a thing you had a question mark on, on comp time.
That was in the one that...
Or am I in the wrong area?
Leslie went through this recommendation from you about payroll practices, and she loved everything about it except for the comp time. She thought that was way more generous than the county would want to initiate.
In my former employment, we used to have seven days is all we could carry over, of comp time. That's federal government, so I don't know what you guys wanna do.
Sorry, what, I thought we were talking about nepotism and fraternization. Did you talk about, what were you saying?
Well, I was into the payroll part.
Yeah, let's finish the nepotism.
Nepotism.
So if we only get that number tonight, then...
Boy, all my notes are gone.
So even though they list in number A1, they list all kinds of relatives they did leave out because of them, even though we listed all of those things.
I mean, in a small community, I mean, if you keep going too far, you're gonna eliminate everyone, so.
Exactly.
If this was Hannaford, we would've had to stop an uncle.
You're right.
I, I haven't reviewed this thoroughly, but I'm looking at number six, except as specifically allowed in this policy, an employee shall not occupy a position in the same division as a relative. That could be hard. So do we know what the exception is?
Well, the relatives goes back to the...
There's an exception down in, on one, to see...
Goes through all the relatives, who they are.
Basically, it always goes back to the fact that as long as they're not, as long as they're not being supervised by that relative.
And that's, the thought is, is if you've got a bigger department, sheriff's office, and you've got a couple that are related, but they're at, at the same level, and you've got a supervisor over them, I don't see that there'd be huge conflict, but like Commissioner McConnell was saying on C1, it looks like it gives you a little bit of the option to be able to get an approval on that. Is that so, am I reading that right?
That's what I'm understanding, and if there is anything that needs to be brought before you guys for approval, then we do that before they hire them?
Yeah, it should be.
I don't see that exception in that.
Yeah, so these exceptions are fairly narrow. It's the relative will be employed for four weeks or less, the relative is the only person qualified or eligible for the position, and the relative is a volunteer. And then it says, if a county employee supervises a relative as a result of one or more of the exceptions listed in C1, then the employee who supervises a relative shall make a complete written disclosure, it must be filed, the employee who exercises authority over a relative may not evaluate the relative's job performance or recommend salary increases for the relative. So if you've got family relations within a department, unless they fit into that A, B, and C of C1, I think it would be hard to get them an exception.
So like a fair, person working at a fair would be okay, right?
That's volunteer.
Volunteer.
Or it's the four-week period.
Four-week period, volunteer.
So there are...
I mean, I, I would, I would even go, first of all, I think the four weeks might be a bit short, because if you are talking about part-time employees for the Parks and Recs Department over the course of the summer, you know, that's probably 90 days.
I ran into that already, and asked Brett to make sure that he wasn't being supervised by his uncle.
Or, or you, you don't, or you do an exception, or you don't prohibit employees that are relatives with... Or you do an exception, or you don't prohibit employees that are relatives within the same department unless one of them is the supervisor. I mean, that's the other thing that you could potentially do.
And that's what I was leaning more towards, that if the supervisor's not a relative, but the two that work in the department are, I don't know if I see a conflict there.
No, I don't see a conflict there.
Yeah. Only the supervisor.
Because the supervisor has the ability to change the, you know, or suggest the change of pay rate, whatever the case, but...
In favor to some.
It's like when the Fryboys both worked for Parks and Rec Department. Of course, they both worked. They did everything together, so...
For Bruce Hawn. So I don't know if we can add something that allows that, because I think we should.
Well, I agree with the time period. I think we ought to increase that.
To 90 days?
12 weeks?
About 12, I think that's enough.
Three months?
I would say through the three months, 12 weeks. I wouldn't go any more. That's if they're a what now?
That allows them to have an exception to work in the same department.
So if they're just a summer employee. But even the referees might work more than three months, if you take the depends. And the landscape of guys that work a little bit more than three months with me.
They might work six, but that'd be max.
Well, we can certainly ask that question. And then depending on how you structure the exception or adjust the rule so it doesn't prohibit members in the family from working in the same department unless one of them is the supervisor, then that may not be as concerning an issue.
I think the biggest thing we got to look at is fairness in employment for those positions, because there might be somebody that applies, but because this person is the relative, then they're hired. But if there's two people, that relative should not be hired unless they're the only person that's totally qualified. That's my opinion. Because, I mean, I've seen it happen even in our county before we were involved, where there were people that were hired for the summer work, and yet there was somebody else down the street that had applied that was a good employee or would've been a good employee, and they were not hired because that person was a favorite relative. So I think we've got to be very, very careful with that, too.
We could add a D exception, so we have A, B, C, D, and just say that, you know...
I just want fairness.
Well, fairness would probably be as soon you get to as close as this as possible, because Weber would've put in here all of the state and federal laws that pertain to making up these rules. That's my...
Maybe.
Because Sarah is so good at making sure all of that...
And I think the exception here in one, it's not saying that you can do this if these are met. It's just saying an exception to the policy above requires prior written approval of HR and the county commission, and it may be granted only in these circumstances. So it's not the go-to, and it still requires HR and the county commission to sign off on it. And these are the only three reasons that the exception is allowed. And so I don't think that adding a D would expand the reasons for the exception.
Can you put something in there that they must disclose that they have a relative?
I thought we already read that, but I'll have to read through it again and make sure I don't know here.
Well, there is in the 2A, the employee who supervises a relative shall make a complete written disclosure of the relationship through a...
But I mean upon hiring, when they're in the hiring process.
In the hiring process, it ought to be.
I'll read through it better and make sure that there is something in that for that. So do you want to talk about Anthony Warren here, or would you like me to try to clarify some of these and then get back to you?
Ratify it and bring it back. That's just my opinion.
I think that would be appropriate, just because we can't. We aren't going to be making the decision without changing those few items anyway, so...
Okay. And then I'll get together with Garrett before we present it back to you guys. Do you have a second? Did anyone even have a chance to look at what Leslie approved?
I did.
Yeah.
Do you want to approve it and just look at that one section real quick, the comp time?
Comp time?
Well, you got comp time and temporary employees.
Those were both concerns to you?
They were big concerns.
Are we looking at eight and nine? Is that what you're talking about?
All my markups are brown, so I don't know what happened to them.
I was assuming that was in consideration of eight and nine, is what I thought.
Says the 30 days working...
Page 16.
Yeah, three of four of the policy, 16 of the packet.
Yeah.
To work with employees to schedule the use of compensatory time off.
30 days is a lot.
That is a month.
It's a ton.
I think in our existing, it says five days.
I think that's too short, but...
That's the only thing that Leslie's...
So I'm... What is the definition of compensatory time? Oh, it's when overtime is necessary, the county encourages... So it's to make a...
In lieu of paying overtime?
They comp it. They said it.
They comp it instead.
And there's not a lot of people that would be an option for it. Sheriff's Department did overtime. They wouldn't be taking comp time with it.
Do you know of another, are there other government entities that use the comp time? I know what the private side does.
Mine does. Mine did. The postal service did.
That makes sense, actually.
I think they might be quite a few, actually, but...
Okay. They can like it.
Yeah, what they'll do, if they work overtime, then that time and a half would be set aside as that would be banked, those hours could be...
It wouldn't be as time and a half, comp time. It's regular time, straight time. Yeah.
So what are you saying? Just you don't like the total number of hours that's allowed?
240 hours is excessive.
Takes a lot from a department, I would think, as small as we are.
Yeah. Because they could take all those days all at once, and what happens to the department during that time frame?
And this is Weber.
And these are non-exempt. Yeah, they can afford that, but we can't. I mean, I could say up to two weeks.
What if you did 10 working days?
Yeah. That'd be fine with me. 10 working days would be fine. And we can try it for a while. If we want to change it, we can change it.
Yeah, we're at 20 working days where I work. Yeah, 160.
Well, 10 seems more fair for us, while we are there.
They got to take some time off once in a while. They can't work all the time, unless there's a reason.
If we're going to do this, we probably need to discuss payout if the employee leaves and how that works, too. It should just be paid out for the time, but...
Yeah, see, that was...
But not rolled over from year to year.
Yeah, because...
Yeah, and then when that roll over time is, because you can only go up to that, well, when's the roll over time? So we probably need to speak to that a little bit more.
One of the other areas we had is we had so much time to use it. And, I mean, I think I had, I'm trying to remember. I could look and find out what it was, but it seemed like I had to use it within three months. And that way it was not carried over, but then you could use one day, and then you can get another day. And so you're basically, you're carrying it out for a while. But that's one thing that they required us to do. If we left, we did not get compensated for it.
You did not?
No, we did not. So you had to take it before you got, before you were terminated.
And I think that maybe already explained in the employee section that we haven't run through yet. So we'll do that if we plan the next term. Are you guys okay still starting at four for the time?
I am.
Until you tell me not to?
I guess so.
If you need a week to not do it, just let me know.
I think that other part with the temporary employees, having a bonus, is not in this section, so it's...
I think it's probably in this section that I'm trying to get you to approve today.
Well, it was the one that, it was in one of the sections that I read, so...
We'll get to it there.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Thank you, Joey.
Pause this for a second.
Are we recording? Okay. All right. Welcome. Morgan County Commission Meeting, June 7th. Time is 5:00. Commissioners present, Commissioner Fackrell, Commissioner McConnell, Commissioner Anderson, and Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Chair Newton will not be with us tonight. Welcome to the public, to residents. We appreciate you being here and your time to be here. Before we get started, I just want to make sure we understand the agenda with how many public comments we could have. There are, we have three public hearings tonight. One is for the proposed amendment, zone map for Milton. Another one is proposed amendment for the zone map in Mountain Green. And the last one is for a family food production code amendment. Those three items will have their separate public hearings. So if you want to make a public comment to any of those three, we will have a time later on at the end of the agenda where you can make a public comment there. The rest of the items on the agenda item, all the action items under F, we have a timeframe of public comment timeframe. That'll be item number D. We'll limit those comments to three minutes. For those of you who have not made public comments before, it's not a discussion back and forth with the commissioners. You come up and make your comments, and you have three minutes to do so, and then you'll be seated. Depending on how many come up in a timeframe, we could be timing it just so that we make sure everybody has their time to be able to come up and make those comments. If you hear a timer go off, wrap up your thoughts, and then if you'll be seated. But we do appreciate you being here tonight. We appreciate you participating in this public process that we have. Okay. To get started, we will have an invocation and a pledge of allegiance. I've asked Commissioner Fackrell to do so.
Our dear heavenly Father, this afternoon, we're very grateful for this opportunity to be here to discuss the affairs of Morgan County. And we're grateful for the land in which we live in and for this state that allows us to be able to be a county and to do those things within our area, our local area. We ask thee at this time that thou will bless each one of us in this room, that we will be kind to each other, and that we will be willing to listen. And we also ask thee that us as commissioners will be able to be fair in our discussion and in our decisions. We will do what is best for this county. We are grateful for our military within the country. We're grateful for what they do to keep us free. We're also grateful for our police officers and our deputy sheriffs for the role that they take within our county to keep us safe and that they do each day for making this a better place. We're again grateful for everything that thou has given to us and what thou has blessed us with in this nice community. We say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Fackrell. Next item on the agenda, consent items. Approval of May 17, 2022 meeting minutes.
I move to approve the May 17, 2022 meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Okay. You got a motion by Commissioner Fackrell, second by Commissioner McConnell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Approved. Let's move forward on the approval of the existing handbook pages.
We didn't finish it, so we don't...
Well, those pages we had gone through before. That's why I brought them in for approval today. If there's one that you can approve as is, let me know. If there's some that can't, then those are ones that we've gone through.
I'm fine with the approval with 10 days.
That's the...
That's separate. That is separate.
I think these...
So these are not involved. It's those others that you gave us last time.
These are the ones that made all the comments.
Oh, we were fine on that.
Yeah, we were fine.
So it's...
It's the compensation policies?
We've gone over that and over it and over it. That one's ready to be signed off on, unless you need to look at that temporary compensation again.
It was in this... What does it say under that temporary?
It just says temporary employees are paid on an hourly basis and within the pay range established by Human Resources and County Commission for the position. Temporary employees may be granted pay increase.
Number three.
They may be granted pay increase based on budget availability in consultation with Human Resource, and temporary employees are eligible for bonus awards.
Yeah, that one I did not like, the bonus award.
We don't even really have bonus awards right now.
That's right. That's why I said I didn't like it.
So I guess that could've been taken out because we haven't redone the...
Right.
Whatever we're calling that. Do you want that out before it's signed, or...
I don't care.
What, where were you reading from? What page are you on, Joey?
On the very last page.
Page 31 of the PDF.
Compensation policies.
Oh, that's where I was at.
And it's, yeah, M, under temporary employee compensation. And I guess the question is, lead-in eligible for bonus awards, even though there are none right now, or take it out and let it be part of that other package that we have come up with?
Well, we took it out of the other one.
Yeah, let's just take it out.
So let's just take it out.
One, are we good with approving it tonight?
Yep.
With removing it?
We've got one correction.
As long as Garrett says we can.
It's not my decision. So I'll make a motion that we approve the compensation policy in the handbook acknowledgement form with the deletion of item M3 in the compensation policy.
I'll second that.
Okay. We got a motion by Commissioner McConnell and second by Commissioner Wilson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion passes. Last consent item, approval of increase in wage for the extension office.
Okay. Basically, what, I send each one of you the chart on that. You received that, I hope. Basically, what it was is the extension office from Utah State. They give them a certain amount of a percentage wage increase every year, and since their fiscal year is on a different timeframe than ours, they're asking that we give them the rest of what our county got, which was 5%. And they would like the rest, or the 2%, basically. They cover the rest of the year, or the rest of the time until next year in July. That's all it was. It costs, I think, $2,000 for the year.
So are you saying that we didn't give them the 5%?
That's correct. We did not give them the 5%. And they weren't asking for it. That's why we didn't, because they were on a different fiscal year. Their fiscal year goes from July to June 30th. And so what they're asking for is to cover from June to, or July to January for that extra 2%.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we...
Which budget is that?
Yeah, that's what I need to know.
That's going to have to be in the...
Well, there is a separate budget line item for it. We're going to have to approve a transfer of funds from the general fund to the extension.
If we're transferring funds and budgets, do we need to do that in an action item versus consent item?
We'll have to do that as a budget adjustment, the next quarterly one, but I think we could approve it.
Okay. Okay.
Change now. So.
I think they're about near the back.
It would be helpful when people make these requests if they included that information with their request.
I thought I sent you a new email with that motion.
Did it have the budget number?
No.
This is where Mike nor being here is.
Yeah, he usually has those.
Seems, sorry.
It's May 25th, no, she does not have the item. There's a full adjustment of $2,340, $62.
I thought it was in this book, but it's not playing out. Oh wait, here it is, Extension Service.
She says she has.
So it would, it would be an approval of the, I'll make a motion to approve the increase in wages for the extension office with money to come from the general fund and to be put into accounts 10-46, 10-110, 120, and 130 as applicable, which are permanent employees, temporary employees, and/or employee benefits.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner McConnell, second by Commissioner Fackrell. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Commissioner McConnell, for taking the time to look that up. Okay, next item on the agenda, Commissioner Declaration of Conflict of Interest.
Yeah, I will have conflict of interest for item two in the public hearings. I have a Nettleton reason.
I will have a conflict of interest in F7. Rank seven.
Any other, any other declarations? Okay, next item on the agenda is public comment. As discussed before, this public comment section is for the action items as listed. If you would, when you come up, if you would state your name. We've got approximately three minutes, if you could keep your comments within three minutes, and the time is yours.
Hello, thanks for your time. My name is Sean York. I understand the three minute time. I have a few things I'm gonna go through. I did email you on this, and I think that there are several people here that would be willing to yield their time. I might just go over three minutes. Is that okay?
Just give it a start and we go.
Okay.
And just as a clarification, he was appointed by, or not appointed by the, the group, but he consolidated a lot of the concerns and was working with the applicants at the Residential Treatment Center.
Thank you.
So I first wanted to start with what I started with at the last planning committee meeting, which was before getting to the permit, there's some concern as the lane, this is, this home, this particular residence for this drug and alcohol facility proposed is the middle home of three homes in the lane small subdivision, which is a mixed-use residential community, a planned unit development. That approval for that community was given by the county when it was established. There is a commons area between the three homes, which allowed the three lots to meet the one acre requirement. That being a lane subdivision, it's not called out specifically in Morgan County Code, but there are others that are like Coventry Cove and the Cottonwoods PUD, and those stipulate that the only conditional uses can apply as home occupations. So I brought this up previously, nobody's given me an answer on it. So I bring this up again because there was no answer, because I don't see how this can be just disregarded completely and not investigated or, or acknowledged. Now, if that is disregarded again and you, we just move to the recommendation as stipulated by the planning committee, then we have, and we talked about the code too in the previous meeting, we understand the state code does override county code where they align, and that's understood. In regards to the conditional use itself, the facility is designated as a C3, and C3 designation indicates that a review is required by the council. These are typically, as you know, uses that are complex in nature and potentially contentious, which this is. Mitigating these concerns that would apply to such uses are extensive and require the approval of the governing body, which brings us here to you. I would note in 883 of the Morgan County Code D, it states, grounds for denial of conditional use permit application, a conditional use permit may be denied if reasonably anticipated detrimental effects of a proposed conditional use cannot be substantially mitigated by the proposal or the imposition of reasonable conditions to achieve compliance with applicable standards. I've got, and I, I did, I know this wasn't in the packet, but I did send it after the planning meeting was held to all of you, but I do have 420 of our community members that have come in agreeance with the conditions that we discussed in addition to the, the attached code conditions in the planning meeting. Those are cited, those are 11 staff recommended conditions. Our, our big thing here is the additional ones outside the code, which are eight, nine, 10, and 11, are, we, we all as a community agreed upon these, and we want these stipulated if the, the cup is given. We want them in writing. We don't want the possibility of the requesters to work around these conditions, and we feel as a community that that would be the case, given that they started working, they, they originally requested their permit stating they were fine with the eight persons Morgan County Code statute. They started building bedrooms without a building permit in the, in the garage right away. They were caught with that. They stated that the home was, this is, this goes to integrity, which I know you don't make your decision based on that, but this is why we feel that they, these conditions must be in writing, is that they financed the home as a second home, not as a commercial residence, and we, we found that out. They put their utilities on the home as a secondary residence, stating hardly anyone would be there, so more of a vacation type location. They did not get the building permit as required before starting work and demoling virtually the whole house. And there are a few other things, but those are kind of the main things. So we would ask that if you issue the cup, that the conditions are stipulated in that approval as specified by the planning committee. Thank you.
Can I just, I want to make sure I'm clear, and I recognize this isn't an interchange, interaction, but are you saying that the conditions listed in the staff report, they include the conditions that you guys are comfortable with?
Yeah, we went over those. They initially didn't in that second meeting and after deliberation on it, and reiterating the impact it will have on our community, we want these things, as stated by the planning committee, to be attached. The one that was not in there was the fence, which was supposed to be discussed between the requesters and the adjacent landowners. Because of the hills and stuff, it's kind of hard to put a fence. We deliberated on that for quite a while, but that was the one that probably needs to be discussed as the only outlier one that wasn't in what was recommended by the staff.
Thank you for that clarification.
Tina Kelly, Mountain Green. To be clear, I didn't agree to give him any of my time. I had a concern about this application, the reprieve facility moving forward after the January meeting of the planning commission, where staff and the planning commission and the applicant discussed issues with Morgan County Code. They were going, the, the direction that I believed was given is that they were going to address the code and bring it up to the state standard and federal standards. And then this application came forward in February on the 11th. Applicant states that they made the application in November, but it could not have been a complete application, or it would have been forwarded with that date. The application has a date of February 11th, 2022. I brought this up in the planning commission meeting. My concern is, why was it done this way? Why, with a pending ordinance change, was it, the application moved forward? And Garrett's aware of that, he was at the meeting. My second concern, I have a lot of them, but because of the time limit. Condition number nine, that no sex offenders or convicted violent felon shall be housed at the facility. That violent was added at the planning commission on, on the request of the applicant, and if you watched his statement or watched that meeting or read the minutes, he said that it would be easy for a person who's addicted to have three convictions, and that would make them a felon, and so they wouldn't be able to participate. My sister-in-law lost her sister to a drunk driver, and believe me, that's a violent crime in any definition, but that was the reason why violent was added, and I don't, I would say convicted felon, not violent. That was my big concern with that. And this doesn't have anything to do with the reprieve one. Your agenda for your public hearings is very basic and does not, I mean, it tells you that there's an application for the change, but it doesn't tell you what the change is or where it's at. And if I hadn't attended the planning commission meetings, I wouldn't know what your three public hearings are about. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rose, also from Mountain Green. I actually live on the street where this home is, where the application is being applied to. Some of the concerns I have were not relative to putting as a condition, but they are certainly things that should be considered, and that is that Mountain View Drive is a small street that's a cul-de-sac. And so like the, the evacuation and emergency response time is, and access points are highly limited. I think that that is, that is something that has to be considered when putting this type of home in place. The other thing is that, is that our street is like literally crumbling away, right? There's this gravel, potholes, cracks everywhere. So then to have a turnover rate of eight new residents every 30 days on a street like that will destroy the road. So the county has got to also keep in mind that like maintenance of the, of the road itself has to be a factor. All right, thank you.
Sarah Carter, Morgan, I'm speaking in behalf of my parents, Melanie and Kelly Lane. They live right next door to the proposed reprieve recovery. We just want to iterate that, or reiterate that a fence is desirable. In the last planning commission, when they were speaking with the applicant, it seemed as though he might, or they might try and not put up a fence, because we aren't sure where a desirable fence would be placed, because the fence line would be nine feet from my parents' home, and the windows on that side of the home are windows to small children. And so they could be having, you know, adult conversation feet away from their house. And so that's not desirable to have a fence right there on the property line. But if we can't reach a conclusion to where a fence line could be between the applicant and the neighbors surrounding, that we would want a fence on the property line all the way around. There is no, there's no way that we would want no fence. Does that make sense? Anyway, I just want to say that whatever happens, please make sure that there will be a fence around the whole property for privacy for our families. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Nick Wallace. I live three houses from the facility that want to make a RTC. I've spent last 15 years in administration of psychiatric facilities, from acute care to RTCs, and I've, I have extensive knowledge of all the regulations and licensing and accreditation required for these types of facilities. The site for the proposed center isn't suitable to protect the patients or the surrounding They have sliding glass doors out of each bedroom that go directly onto the back deck, which goes into the yard of wooded areas and neighbors' yards. So it's a real big possibility for AVAL, for patients that can pretty much walk right out and be right in anyone else's yards. It's also a difficult layout of that house to supervise patients. It has a hallway that runs basically the length of the house, and there's bedrooms kind of scattered along, along the sides of it. When we look at what addiction causes, it's usually illegal and unsafe choices people make when they're addicted to things. And although RTC level of care, they aren't currently using drugs, they're there because they haven't figured out how to make good choices yet, how to stay, stay sober and stay clean. And because of that, when the house isn't secure and it's so close to so many family homes, we're putting all of those, the neighborhood and families at risk of their bad decisions. And I personally, in my time in behavioral health, I repaired and I had to replace people's vehicles, because people had broken out of the facility and damaged vehicles. I've had a bunch of theft and just other damage to personal property of neighboring grounds in the neighborhood. The applicants have tried to eliminate regulation from the county by quoting state licensing requirements. And state licensing for a facility like that is very minimal. They have to meet requirements, but they aren't enforced unless there's complaints, multiple complaints to the state usually. And a smaller RTC like that, they'll have one audit per year. So we're opening up the neighborhood, and we need to have conditions so we can have the regulations from the community and the county to help ensure that we will have as little effect as possible. Then they, they, they have shown lack of experience and integrity with a lot of the things, and Sean mentioned a bunch of them, but at the last meeting, they talked about cameras being required by state codes. But at the last meeting, they talked about cameras being required by state codes, so it didn't need to be in a condition. Drug testing was required by state regulations, and it's not. And I just, I don't feel after what I've seen. And I moved up here because I worked in behavioral health, and it's not, it's not a relaxing and peaceful environment. And they bought this house, and they feel that for them to make money is okay to take away our peaceful environment, and I don't think that's okay. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Lars Yulissi, Mountain Green resident, and my question is for not only you all, but possibly our lawyer. When it comes to the drug testing as a way of enforcing compliance at the drug and alcohol treatment facility that's being proposed, how is the county going to be able to ensure that the drug tests are negative? And if they are not negative, that they then are held accountable for breaking the requirements for establishing the facility? The reason I don't think that the county will be able to get that information is because of the HIPAA law, the Health Information Portability Privacy and Accounting Act. So that is a federal law which was enacted to enhance privacy for patients who will only have their information released to covered entities, and Morgan County would not be considered a covered entity. Covered entity would be somebody directly involved in their healthcare, or the finance and payment of their health costs. So if you could please explain that. Otherwise, I think that that should be written in more clearly to make sure that the drug testing will be done, and that the county can find out what the results are. That's my question.
Any other comments?
Hi, my name is Jordan Lake. I grew up in the house next door to the proposed location. And just one comment before we move forward, and for the council to keep in, keep in mind, is my request would be that as many of the proposed conditions that can feasibly be passed and tied to this be put in place. Because, like, I've, we've spoken with the applicants, and they seem like kind people, and they, they seem pleasant to speak with. But as has kind of been mentioned before, lots of things that they've done haven't fostered a relationship of trust with the people in the community. And like, I grew up in this community, I know lots of these people, and they're, they're good people that give of their time to serve the people that are marginalized or underserved, or willing to give a hand up to people that are homeless, or serving in penitentiaries, or like, all sorts of situations. Like, I think this community would be a great community to help people with this need. But I don't think that the people, the applicants, have shown themselves to be trustworthy. And I'm willing to be corrected if I'm wrong, but the things that have been brought up, you know, with the mortgage being as a personal home, or the water being registered not as a business, or the, you know, construction or improvements being put on the house without, without permits first. I think the things they say and the things they do aren't lining up, and I would like the assurance of things being written down, that they will be held accountable. And I'd like to keep that, have the council keep that in mind. Because in the prior planning commission meeting, there was lots of discussion of striking points from the conditions, because, you know, oh, well, this is probably already taken care of in this, that, or another way. But regardless, I'd like as many of those as can feasibly be left on to remain there. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, I appreciate, again, all of you that have come and all the comments that you have made. Let's go on to the next item that we have. We have got Division of Wildlife Resources. And Ben could not make it, I believe he's had Dan Olson in replacement. Does that sound right?
Yeah, it is, yeah. Good evening, I'm Daniel Olson, here representing the Division of Wildlife Resources tonight. DWR owns lands within Morgan County, but we're tax exempt, so we make a payment each year in lieu of taxes to the county. So that's what, that's my item tonight, is to bring, drop that check off for you guys. It's $3,000, $3,585. Do you want me to bring that to you?
Sure. We love presentations like this.
That's all I have tonight, and just to thank you for all the help that Morgan County's given us. We've had some, some tough wildlife issues work out lately, and the commission's been really helpful, so thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, next item on the agenda, an update from Weber Morgan Health Department. Director Cowan.
Thanks, Commissioner Brian Cowan, the executive director of the Weber Morgan Health Department. And I apologize, I didn't bring any money. But hopefully I brought some good news. I did bring with me the executive director of Weber Human Services, Kevin Eastman. And we're here this evening to report on our progress of the office and meeting space that we're working on in Morgan County, in our effort to improve our presence here in the county. As I understand, construction of this, we back up a little bit, we're, we've secured space in the basement of the Morgan City Building, and that has been going under, undergoing a remodel to prepare for our office and Weber Human Services stock by that space. I heard this evening that the drywall's up, so that's good news, and the progress is moving forward. We're tentatively looking at moving into that space in the first couple of weeks of August. We have a group planning an open house that we, we hold to, hope to hold as a joint effort to introduce the space to the community, and that, again, is being planned for about the middle of August. As we look at the Health Department, initially, our services that we'll offer there are access to vaccinations, and one thing I'm really excited about is our WIC program, so that our clientele from Morgan County that's participating in WIC can do all of their, their things here in Morgan City, rather than having to travel down to Ogden to do that. We're also working on the ability to do our permitting for environmental health services in that space. And we've instructed staff that as we need to schedule meetings with Morgan County residents, we'll give them the option of us coming to meet them in this space, or coming to Ogden if they choose to do so. We're excited about that and happy with the progress. We also have furniture scheduled for delivery the last week of July, so we're hopeful the space will be ready by then for the furniture. And with that, maybe Kevin might have a few words about what their plan is for that space and services they'd like to bring.
Well, I think that that's an evolution. We just wanted to get here first, all the services that we provide are provided to the residents of Weber and Morgan Counties. The unfortunate thing has been in the past that Morgan County residents pretty much have to travel to Weber County to get those. So we're excited to be in this office space to try to open up more possible services for residents in this county. We provide mental health, substance abuse treatment. We won't talk about any inpatient stuff tonight, I think there's enough of that on your agenda. But we're primarily going to work on an outpatient basis. We are the local authority, and so the legacy Medicaid in particular is required to be served by us. All of the other expansion Medicaid services has a choice, and so that will probably be with this residential program, if you're talking, or considering so. But again, mental health, substance abuse counseling, we provide the aging services, which are done here in Morgan County, and meals on wills. And then we have, in the past, provided some prevention services and worked with the school district, and so we're real excited about getting more of a presence here. So those are the four main areas of services that we'll be providing.
Great.
Thank you.
I just have one question for you. So I keep hearing about COVID cases starting to go up again. I'm assuming we're pretty good on hospitalization and all of that stuff, that the cases are relatively mild, or more mild now than originally?
Yeah, Commissioner, thanks for asking. It's been a while since I've been up to do a COVID update. Currently, Morgan County is designated by the CDC as a low-risk area. And cases are kind of hovering up and down. In the Weber Morgan Health District, we're averaging about 80 to 90 new cases a day right now. In Morgan County, that's about 1, well, 1.2 is kind of where we hover. That's per 100,000 in the population, so, you know, it actually works out to be an actual case every two to three days, a new case that tests positive in Morgan County. So the risk is relatively low. We're still a health department providing the same guidance to our residents to mitigate that risk of getting vaccinated. If you're attending areas where you're concerned about close quarters with other people who may be carrying the virus, to go ahead and mask up and do social distancing to help reduce that risk as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you both coming up on your time. All right, we will go to the action item portion of our agenda. First on the list, we've got our city manager, Ty Bailey.
Thought you were going to skip me, and I didn't know I was an action item. So Ty Bailey, I'm actually here as the executive director of the RDA, which is the redevelopment agency, so it's just a different hat. I think you have a proposal in your packet. Basically, the RDA's been really successful. We've done four projects so far, since we renewed it in 2019. When we renewed it, we left it at a 60-40 split, minimal contribution, just to leave it, keep it intact, and we talked about if we ever got the hotel, that we would come back and renegotiate that rate. The hotel, it has been successful, so we'd like to renegotiate the 60-40 and do a 75-25, so the property taxes will be contributed in that district. 75% of it will go to the RDA, and that would generate enough money to do one project per year. Currently, all of the incentive money is tied up in the hotel. So the other three projects that we did, we got done before the hotel was established, or before that payment was due. So all the details are in the proposal, impact to the county. You can see the, there's kind of a, there's a negative, or basically, if we use the exact same numbers as last year, you'd be about $7,500 less, you'd receive about $7,500 less. But the young automotive, CDA is ending this year, so it would offset that deficit, and you'd still be in a, basically, a net zero position with the change in the formula, so. The school district and the city have both agreed to the change in the formula, and it's something that we would just do across the board. If one NAD didn't want to, then we would probably not, not pursue it, so. I don't know if you have any questions or reminders about how that incentive program works, but basically, it helps bring old buildings to code, or helps incentivize kind of the infrastructure side of new capital investments. In the past, it's been up to $40,000, so it's, it pays itself back in eight years, at least eight years, in new property tax. So you take a vacant piece of ground, you help them get the infrastructure and whatnot, so that they could build a commercial district, that building is taxed at 100% value, and so the increase in property tax pays back that $40,000 over eight years at a minimum. As values have been going up, it's actually paying back quicker than that, and also based on the value of the project. So it's capped at $40,000, the grant is, so if you put, you know, a $2 million project, taxes on that $2 million pays back pretty fast.
So is this just an automatic renewal, Ty, every year? Or do they renegotiate every year, or what?
Yeah, so what we did, it's renewed for 10 years. So the RDA is established until 2029. When we restructured it, what it is, is it's 100% of the property tax is given to the RDA. The RDA keeps its percentage and then pays back the entities. And the reason why we did that is because we don't have to adjust anything on the, with the state on the property tax valuation. So 100% of it comes back, and then between us, we can negotiate that, that amount, like how much we would pay back. And we can renegotiate it if you, if you want on an annual basis. It's just a matter of changing the agreement. Prior to that, we would have had to time it so that it got included in the property tax valuation, and the property tax rates were included in, in the division of how much each entity was expected to collect. But we can do it mid-year now, we could just. The reason why I'm proposing it now is because the RDA budget's set in June. I just need to know how much to budget for, to set the new budget in June. But that budget activity, we, you know, I can bring back the agreement anytime, I mean, the next couple of months to get it wrapped up. So tonight, we don't have the agreement to approve, it's basically just to see what the level of interest is, a head nod type thing, and I can bring back, you know, the draft of the agreement with the new rates in it. If it's a, if it's a no, then I won't bother.
So can you, can you give me a little, I don't know if these guys are totally aware of it, or anything. They might know it more than I do. You're saying that you want us to go from a 60 to 75% of what?
Property tax. So.
Well, of the tax increment generated in the project area. Okay, so if they bring in so much money.
So the property is assessed, right? So there's a base value that it, it stays, but of the increase in the value, you contribute 75% of that increase to the RDA. The RDA would keep it for this incentive program, and then you would receive 25%. So you're, you're foregoing the, the property tax to help incentivize development.
Basically for 10 years. And so the schools put in?
Well, at the same rate.
Oh, so they all put in 75%?
But they contribute more, just because, you know, in essence, because they have, they collect more in property tax, the county collects the next amount, and then the city collects the lower amount.
Okay, so. So when we're doing this, if we increase it now, it's so that way we can bring in more, and it's not going to go to the current one that we've got in there now, the hotel?
It'd be in addition to the hotel.
Okay, so that way we could do something else with somebody else?
Yep, yeah. So we've all, we've already obligated the next 10 years to the hotel, based on the current formula that we have. This would generate about $40,000 more for one project per year. So it helps, so just to give you an idea, the first one that we did, we had a lot of vacancies on Commercial Street, and as a business owner, it's like, do I want to take on a rehab of this old building? It's got all kinds of code compliance issues, right? So we're like, hey, we're in for $40,000. They come and apply, they go through the board to get approved, and that brings the electrical, the plumbing. One of them, when they stripped away the wall, they had a tree that was growing right up through the middle of the.
I saw that tree.
Yeah. And then just old, old rusted pipes, so it gets all new plumbing, and so it kind of offsets the risk. on the redevelopment side. And then on the, on the brand new build, the problem with on Commercial Street is getting the utilities connected. So it's helped run new laterals. We've put in a new water line, you know, that they can connect to. And so it's really helped. So that's the property tax scenario. But the other thing to recognize is that sales taxes generated, jobs are provided. It's not vacant, you know, vacant buildings anymore. So there's some other benefits that just come from the incentive. So it's been a pretty successful.
So what do you normally allow for each entity that might come in to do that? I mean, how much is allowed within the RDA per business? Or is it based upon?
It's up to forty thousand that they can apply for. And it's just on a, depending on what's available. So if there's no funds available, we don't do another project. That's kind of where we're at now. We've done the last project. So it's kind of how, kind of how it works. It's been, it's been great. I think we've gone from vacancies to now traffic complaints because this street's busy.
That's true.
So, and we're almost a hundred percent. So the last couple of buildings are almost occupied. The Buzzies Building has been rehabbed and they've applied for building permit for the barbecue place. The in-building has seven tenants in it that used to be, used to be totally vacant. That was another project. The old bank building got rehabbed and there's now office space. That was another project that we did. And all of this is just since 2019. We just awarded one to the Valus. So the Valus is being renovated with a historic architect. So it's been good.
So who is on the RDA?
It's the city council.
Just the city council?
Yep. And then me.
That's pretty typical.
Yep.
In this context, we're just a participating agency. So I don't know where we don't have the agreement that we need a formal motion, but I'll make one anyway, that we move forward with discussion and documenting an increase in the partition rate, participation rate of the taxing entities for the Morgan RDA from sixty percent to seventy-five percent.
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner McConnell, second by Commissioner Wilson. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
Awesome. I'll bring back the actual document to, I'll start with Garrett, or Mr. Garrett. Or, I don't know what, what's he talking? Mr. Smith? Sorry about that. Mr. Smith. And so then, next time, we'll actually just be reviewing the actual document and the language. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Hey, before we move on to the next action item, there's been a few of us that have been here since four o'clock. So we're just going to take a quick five-minute break and we'll be right back.
You need my licorice too? Are you planning on signing that stuff tonight?
Yeah, that's what Julie said, that we needed them signed. So I was planning on, yeah.
And our minutes too, since we have to post it within three days.
That's right.
All right, as soon as Julie gets back, I guess we can start.
Okay, welcome back. That was approximately five minutes. But we'll move forward on what we have here on our agenda. Next item on the, on the agenda, Jim Flint, discussion decision on Golden Hills Estate request. And I, I know Jim and I know Jim's not here, but I believe he's got somebody in his place.
Yeah. Good evening, Commissioner. Thank you, Yancey Scott, owner developer, Golden Hills. And we sent you guys a letter or a request. We're getting ready, we're just on the verge of the final. And our current permit expires on the seventeenth of this month. So we were just asking if we could get a twelve-month extension. We've done all, everything that we can up to this point. Most of the delays that we've had up to this point have been UDOT and a few other things, or some change in the code. We met those requirements. And so we're just pushing through and getting ready for a final meeting. So I wonder if you give me some time to finish her up.
So did you, is this an extension of your preliminary plat approval?
Yeah. Yep.
Well, if you're on the cusp, you only need to wait a week.
I do. I want to be on the next meeting for sure. Like, that's where we're at. That's how close. So, yeah, we could probably actually get it done, we're hoping in three. But, you know, you know what we're dealing with. So that's what I'm looking forward to. I want to get it done. Any questions you guys have?
Would it be okay to ask him to explain what the holdup has been? Just, just because as I'm reading the code, it says for good cause shown. And it sounds like that's happening. But just to put it on the record, I think would be appropriate.
Sure. So since we're in the middle of it, there were some code changes that happened with a geological study that we currently had done. I meant the first, the last time we got through. So we had to get it done again. We had to set up and do another geological study, pay the money to get it pushed through. And then we had to get UDOT to get us access to get onto the property there. So we had to get a conditional permit or an easement permit that allows us to put in our roads right there. They took about six months longer than we thought. And then we sat down and met the chief and Boyd and a few other guys to make sure that we met some of the requirements that you guys wanted us to fill out as far as escape on fire and some of the things we had planned for that. So just all in all, we've been pushing through as fast as we can. We've just been waiting kind of for all of that to get finished up. And I was in constant communication with Lance and he knew pretty much what was going on along the way. I didn't realize it was up that quick. A year went by quick. So, like I say, we're, we're right there. And should have it done wrapped up here pretty quick for a fire.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we give a one-year extension to Golden Hills Estate project for their final plat approval. Preliminary. Preliminary.
Preliminary.
Final plat approval. I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Wilson, second by Commissioner McConnell. All in favor?
Aye.
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 A motion, motion passes.
You know.
I pushed it, I pushed it to him and I told him whatever happens.
I need you guys' phone number.
Okay.
So I can talk to you. So if you can send it to me by email or something.
You bet. I'll get that to you.
I'd like to talk to you.
Okay.
Okay.
For sure. Thank you. All right, thanks guys.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, John Barber, discussion decision on business grant recipients.
I'm gonna pull this back a little bit because we got a, we've got video.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. We were, when we did our CED budget last year, we put in thirty thousand for business grants. So we had a scenario on how we chose everybody in the business grants that were available. So this PowerPoint, we're going to go through and Andrew handed you all one out. But let me go over a little bit about the grant process. And it's on your back page. But businesses apply for the grant. Decisions were made by the committee and presented to the CED board on five, four, twenty twenty-two. Final decisions are going to be presented to you tonight. Following approval by the county commission, Andrew from the BRC will communicate the final decisions to the business owners who applied at the time. Awardees develop a plan to use their reward to grow their businesses, update growth strategy with Andrew, and provide monthly updates and economic development, to the Economic Development Committee. They can be invited to participate in the CED and update the county commission. The requirements for this grant, businesses must be in business for one year. The business must operate in or be based in Morgan County, must have a current business registration and with the state of Utah, must have a current business license with the city of Morgan or Morgan County, must have business checking account. Business taxes, or business taxes with the IRS and state of Utah must be current. Home-based businesses can't apply. Projects must be ready to start before six thirty of twenty twenty-two. Projects must be, have a measurable timeline and positive, projects must have measurable impact on the community. So we started applications on three, seven and closed it on four, thirteen of this year. And the committee consisted of myself, Mayor Steve Gale, Trace L Wordell, who's the president of the chamber, Mauricio Melendez, local business, Greg Bedrin from the bank, and Andrew Willis from the SBDC. So. What's that? Warming up.
So while they're warming up, can I ask you a question, John?
Yeah.
Do we have any that applied that were not granted?
Yes.
Okay.
There was five that applied and they'll be on, they're probably not going to be on your, on your PowerPoint. But the five that applied were, that didn't, weren't successful, were Achieve Fitness, Build the Brave, which is up in Hardscrabble, Flyfish, Utah, and Mount Joy Pottery. We weren't really that enamored with the financials and what they wanted to do with the money. The six that we chose were Grounds for Coffee, Deb Spicy Pie, Morgan Valley Crafts, The Weight Room, Boonies, and Brighton Blades. So we'll go through this PowerPoint once she gets it up. Well, if y'all have this, I'll go just read through it while she's getting that up. On page one, it says the Morgan County Grant Program is designed to support local businesses, create substantive growth that could result in adding new jobs and have a positive impact on Morgan County economy. The applicant must be a majority owner if the local business has multiple owners. This addition, this addition of the grant program is not for startups. We've got another plan for startups and we'll show you that with you. Without a history of sales, but for existing businesses who are experiencing growth, have a solid operational foundation and a business who are in a position to use these funds to accelerate their growth. If applicants weren't ready to use the funds for economic growth, we refer them to continue to work with Andrew Willis and Nisa Brown at the Business Resource Center. So the first person that we awarded a grant to that we'd like to submit for approval is Grounds for Coffee. And that's, the owner of that business is Shawna Walker. She asked for eighty-six hundred and fifty dollars. The CED board voted on the recommendation of the committee to award eighty-six hundred and fifty dollars. The use of the funds is expansion of the dining space for increased seating outdoors in an outdoor patio space by optimizing the capacity of both indoor and outdoor space when not only increase sales, but generate new meeting and events by offering additional seating and catering. And the second business was Deb Spicy Pie. And I don't know if anybody's been in there lately, but if you go in for dinner, you better take a number. They asked for five thousand. We voted to give them five thousand. Use of funds upgrade and/or purchase food prep, cooking equipment, and increase product quality and quantity for additional revenue and allow for business growth and expansion with new and improved supplies. And that's Deb Spicy Pie. For the next slide. The third business was Morgan Valley Crafts. They asked for five thousand. The board recommended three thousand. A use of the funds is the grant will provide the needed resources to expand staff, material, and obtain new services, providing increased profit and sustainability. And there's a little note down there from Melissa on your thing. It's pretty nice. The Weight Room, which is a workout facility in town, asked for ten thousand. We voted to recommend five. The use of the funds would be additional trainer to meet increased demand and extended hours as needed, increasing revenue and following for growth with additional staffing and services. And that's owned by Jose and Kenzie Kino. Then Boonies, I don't know if you've all seen them out here on State Street, but they asked for, they have retail and online. And they asked for ten thousand. And we voted to award them sixty-three fifty. They want to increase both print and digital marketing campaigns with new material. Funds will also aid in purchasing of additional inventory and product, including rental program, business expansion, and growth through expansion. And they, they're looking at having classes on emergency preparedness and some other things that I think is really a good idea. So that's Boonies. Then Brighton Blades was our last awardee. Brighton Blades is a business created by four Morgan women. Also, we saw the need for the quality knives that appeal to women. As a team of mother and daughters, we have worked hard to use the skills we've acquired in different areas to create and grow this business. We are We are a women-owned and operated company that focus on what women want and need. They asked for fifty-four hundred. We recommend five thousand. The use of the funds is decrease online presence through paid social media marketing, professional photography, and online assets to attract new customers, increase revenue and expand business. And there, thank you to the committee is there, you can read that. Part of, the purpose of the Morgan County Grant Program was to support Morgan County businesses in their pursuit of growth opportunities. And I don't know if you know the history behind this, but back when I was on council and shortly after council with the CED Board, they had a Fast Track grant, and it was fifty thousand dollars match. And we were successful in doing seven of those, which hired, I think, do you remember how many people, Andrew?
It was over thirty.
Over thirty people. So that was, one of the Fast Track grant recipients was Bingham's Meats, and the other one was Precision Automotive, just to give you a couple of them. So we kind of patterned this, although it's not the same money, but it's kind of patterned after that for job creation, marketing, try and increase the sales tax base that these companies are providing to the county. Each grant was carefully reviewed and evaluated by Morgan County Economic Development Committee and then approved by the Morgan CED Board of Directors. Decisions were made solely based on businesses' current strength, opportunity for future sales growth, anticipation, anticipated sustainability of the business, economic impact, and believe that the business owner can execute their plans. Each business owner has expressed immense gratitude for the program and the ability it allows them to maximize and earn potential, and their earning potential. Increased sales will also add to sales of food and beverages, rental tax collection to Morgan County, and feed into the ecosystem for future funding opportunities. These dollars are being requested by the CED Board to be allocated to each entity utilizing the rural economic development funds provided by the Governor's Office of Economic Development for Morgan County. So we're seeking your approval to allocate these funds to each entity and will provide quarterly with those deliverables on their success. One of the things that, the businesses that were not successful are, we strongly encourage them to meet with Andrew at the BRC and go over business plans and those kinds of things. Businesses are, that were successful are required to report to Andrew as on a quarterly basis.
Yes.
Why don't you go ahead and talk about that?
At least quarterly. Those who were successful will be asked to meet with me at least quarterly to work on their growth strategies and update their growth strategies based on the deliverables tied to these funds as far as additional growth that they can receive on their own. And so, we're very excited to work with them, all of them, even those who weren't, didn't receive funds. We want to help get ready so that they, if those funds are offered in the future, that they'll be ready to participate in future rounds.
Great.
So I think the total, total request is for thirty-three thousand. And part of the thing that I think is unique is that the BRC, which Andrew comes up every Wednesday and meets with businesses most of the day and helps them with business plans, all kinds of different things. So, it's really helping the community out.
We want to help businesses accelerate their growth, and so we don't want them to feel, any business to feel as though they don't have, they have access, we want them to feel that they have access to free support. Because I'm funded by federal and state tax dollars, they can meet with me absolutely I always remind them that I am your tax dollars at work, hopefully.
And we hope you don't retire.
This is a great program. It's helped many businesses. We appreciate all the help and all the work from the CED Board and everybody involved. Just a quick question, is this countywide? So if businesses, it's a countywide?
It's a countywide program.
Program.
Yeah.
May I add something just really quickly? So I want to first of all say thank you to Andrew. He built this program from scratch, basically. They have to go through a whole business modeling process, market analysis, basically, and fiscal sustainability. So this money isn't just being given out. And so for those who are very protective of public funds, I think that's super important. So I just want to say again, thank you to Andrew. And we feel like this program is just so important to the community, really sustaining and strengthening businesses for, for our short-term economic development, moving into long-term economic, you know, development goals, that we're actually probably gonna ask for fifty thousand in our next rural grant application. And I just wanted to put that out a little early because we just have seen so much success in this with the opportunity to grow local businesses. And the last thing is, one of the requirements for reporting and in the application is a request of reporting of how many jobs have been created. This is the mechanism that we're using to, for job creation in our economic development and in our reporting to the rural economic grant process. So I just wanted to include that.
Thanks, James. Any questions?
Yeah. Thanks for your work on this.
Yep.
Yes, thank you very much, and I, yeah.
We need a motion.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the grant award recipients identified by the Morgan County Economic Development Committee and approved by the Morgan CED Board of Directors, and the amount specified in the presentation totaling thirty-three thousand dollars of the funding to come from the rural economic development grant funds.
And I'll second it.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner McConnell, and a second by Commissioner Fackler. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Thanks for all your work.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda, Chris Hermoto. Looks like we've got a discussion on a grant and then also an update on the Lost Creek Project.
We'll start with Lost Creek.
Because that's the short one.
Well, thanks for having me. Again, my name is Chris Hermoto. I'm the current manager of East Canyon and Lost Creek State Park. I just, this is probably long overdue, just to talk to you a little bit about Lost Creek and where we're at in the development. I should have put it on the computer so you could actually see, so I guess our guests could see what we're looking at. But the first one, where it says on the top of the page, first phase, that one is the initial assessment that we took as far as the development of Lost Creek State Park. If you look at, there's a couple of different campgrounds that were developed in this initial first, or I mean, I shouldn't say developed, but looked at and planned for in the first phase. Just to give you a reference to, we, the state put towards seven million dollars for the overall project. And as you know, with the cost of products, right, seven million dollars is not gonna go as far as it used to, and that's gonna be kind of a, one of the main reasons as far as what we can develop. And if you look at the map right here, the first area that came to mind is the Little Creek Trail Campground. That's the area below the dam, right? It's just south of the dam. Some people will utilize that as a primitive campground already, and so it wasn't hard to envision what a campground would look like in that area. If you go to that second page, it shows the campground in more detail. And you can look at there, there'll be, I believe, what, thirty-one sites in that campground loop. Again, these will be more RV sites that will be, it'll be paved, well, I should say assuming that, we'll look at the numbers on the, or I mean, the bids start coming back in. But it'll be a paved campground with water and electricity. There'll be a dump station located near the campground as well, with an entrance station and two group camps, campsites located there as well. So a very really nice, well-put-together, I think, developed campsite for people to come. Again, some of the questions that we've been asked is why do we want to develop this area? Main reason is, is just it's low-hanging fruit for the utilities that we need to put in there, right? The power's already located right there. Water development would be through a well there, and I believe it did have water at one point when it was a state park back in nineteen, the nineties. So we're looking at that area as far as the main development with that money. And this project's going into three phases too, so, I mean, it'll be going out, I believe, into three bid, the bid projects. One will be for this campground, one will be for the water development, meaning the well and the tank that will service the well. And on the last page is the, one of the big important ones, I think, for, you know, I know at least for us in state parks, as well as a lot of people in the county, ranger residents up on site. And this, this locate, this ranger residence will be located just right above the dam, not too far. If you look in the yellow section in the Deer Hollow, Dave's area, it'll be located just to the, I guess that would be the northwest area of the map, if you look at that closely. It's kind of a little bit hard to tell, but that's where the ranger residents will be located. We know that when it was a state park way back in the day, I know the sheriff has told me a lot of stories of the problems that they had after hours of what happened up in that, that area of the state park. And so we wanted to ensure that if we had a, you know, a home up there, that we could get quick response to the, you know, the campground or to any of our day-use areas as needed. And so, that's kind of, like I said, the initial, when we're looking at the plans, this was the initial, you know, developments that we looked at with the seven million dollars. I know it doesn't seem like a lot for that amount of money, but I think when we initially put this, or when Civil Science, the developers that looked at the plans, I think when they came back with initial costs, we were well over our budget, even just for those three items, the well, right? Well development, this campground, and that ranger residence. So, we'll look at it and the, I think the ninety percent phase should be over and complete within the next two weeks. It'll probably going out to bid, this is a good one for anybody that's listening to this within the community that has any interest in development, right? Has any, any interest in making a legacy project here in Morgan County, this would be a big one for them. And so we would, you know, hope that any of our local companies would be interested in developing Lost Creek State Park. But that'll come out probably within, probably July. And once we, well, if the bids come way over, overbid, we know within some other state park projects, the bids are coming back like extremely, extremely high. So we may take a look and, you know, pump the brakes a little bit on development until maybe prices come down if they do, and maybe put it back out to bid at that point again and see. So it'll be, it'll be kind of a challenging thing to see where we're at with the, with the bids when they come back. Construction would be, would begin shortly after that, probably in August or September, depending on how the winter goes. We'd be hoping that maybe by the end of next summer, the campground would be complete. So unfortunately, we wouldn't get any use out of for not, probably not even in the summer of twenty-three. We'd be probably ready to go in about twenty-four. But that's assuming everything goes well and we have supplies and stuff that we would need to kind of develop that. So that's kind of just the breakdown of what we're looking at. We had a lot of big plans when we first initially started, but unfortunately, you know, with the amount of funds that we were given, which we're very grateful for, no doubt about, but seven million just doesn't go as far as it used to. So, yeah, that's where we're at. So is there any questions on Lost Creek? Yeah.
I have a question for you. In the beginning, I thought they allocated to us fourteen million dollars from the state. What'd they do with the other seven?
No, I, the only initial, the numbers that I got were the seven million dollars. When it, when the bill came out, there was two state parks associated with this bill, right? Utah Raptor State Park, which is down in Moab, right? And Lost Creek State Park. They allocated, I can't remember the number, and I don't want to misquote it, but it was multiple millions, like, we're twenty or thirty, thirty million dollars to develop that, that park, and we got seven, seven million out of it.
I'll talk to them.
And now, that's not to say that we can't get more funding for it, right? We're always open to more opportunities. And with this being, you know, federal land, it's the Bureau of Reclamation, right? We have the opportunity to, you know, manage those areas, and they typically will match whatever the state puts in for those, right? So as long as they have that, that funding available, which I'm not one-hundred percent sure where they're at with that.
Because I think that was the conversation, the match from the reclamation.
Right, right. So, the hope is that they will match and we will get in the additional seven, so, but...
It'd be nice.
I don't hold your breath too long on that one, so.
I, I just know another, another group of plans that you have on this that you're not relaying, and a lot of people are wanting to know, and that is trails.
Absolutely.
We're trying to put trails the whole length of the reservoir.
Yeah.
Which is a long ways.
Yeah. Half of it's done, right? The road that's just, you know, behind the gate right there, that's, there's been a lot of discussion on that, on what direction the state parks can go. We haven't really delved into that. That's where I think the, you know, the, the trails.
Trails committee's gonna work on that.
Make some good, sound decisions on where that is, but also taking into account our private landowners that live and manage those areas around the state park. That's a big one too. And that's one thing I would like to say to the commissioner, that the landowners have been very gracious when we've approached them with these plans and discussed to them, you know, you know, how, how will this impact their, you know, ranching up in their, you know, on the properties? And we're gonna try to do our best to minimize those disturbances, whether it be, you know, livestock watering in the reservoir. We want to ensure those things that have been done in the past can continue for our landowners here in Morgan, so, yeah. We just want to be good neighbors as well, so.
One of the things also, we took a tour up there the other day, last Thursday, with the tourism people from, Office of Tourism from the state of Utah. They were quite impressed with Vista Works, and I think they were impressed with what was happening and that it's also gonna be a wakeless lake, right?
That is the, that is the plan, yeah.
That's the intent. And so it's gonna be a nice lake, blue ribbon fishery.
Correct.
It'll be very nice. Dark skies, you better get that one on, on your list.
Yeah, we're working on that. That one's a tough one. That took me like five years for East Canyon. But, some updates though from Lost Creek, though, it was, we have installed new restrooms up there at the park. So if you get a chance to go out there, there's new restrooms put in there, as well as we added a, basically a boat ramp, or a boat dock on the boat ramp. So we call it a wedge dock, so our boaters can tie off onto that, so they don't have to, like, hopefully pray it stays on the, on the shoreline as they're walking all the way to park their truck. You know, when we look at phase two, that's gonna be a big one for us, is updating that, kind of the turnaround spot in the parking lot for our boating community that come up. So we get that one squared away. I think that'll be the next one of the ones we tackle when we get a little bit more funding for it. But, yeah, absolutely, there's, I think there's a lot of interest in people already recreating up there. You know, we kind of compare it to, you know, what am I trying to think of in Weaver County? The non-motorized lake.
Cozy.
Cozy, right? And we don't want to be a cozy, right? We know as far as, at least when our rangers go up there, what issues they've got, and we're gonna try to do our best to keep it more of the, the way we have East Canyon running as opposed to like a Pineview, so. No, no offense to Weaver County, but we like to run a little bit different up here, so that'll be our goal. Anyway, okay, is there any other questions?
Nope.
All right, Michelle, should we take this one away? Okay, now we're shifting hats here. We're going to the T-TAB portion of this. We have a short presentation, or we did? IT?
Bailey knows that, good.
Okay, just to give you a rundown, so as a board, we met last Thursday and discussed, you know, a potential idea that we thought would be a benefit to the county. The Utah Office of Tourism, they have this grant, it's a fifty-fifty match that will help the, the tourism aspect of Morgan County through the DMO, right? So Vista Works. We're already paying them ninety thousand dollars. I believe it's coming out of the T-TAP program, right? Coming out of the T-TAP fund. So for additional ten thousand dollars more, not only would we be paying their wage, but we get a hundred thousand dollars of additional benefits into this. Now, I want to make it clear to, especially to everyone listening to, that the money that would be spent for this project is not coming out of the general fund. It would be coming out of the T-TAP, no, TRT fund.
TRT and restaurant.
And so we're ensuring that, yeah, those ones, like I said, don't come out of any of the general funds. We just wanted to make sure that one was clear. And again, these benefits are additional things like paying for Google Ads, professional photography, other things that we can do to ensure that we're getting high-quality advertisements and other things. Now, as you can see here, this is just a simple, look, we're, we're obviously paying the ninety thousand for the Vista Works contract out of the T-TAP, or the TRT fund. With an additional ten thousand, we can not only pay for Vista Works, but again, getting that basically free money through this grant. Now, the issue with this grant is, is that it's due June twenty-second, so coming up very, very fast. So as a board, we felt that it was in the best interest to recommend this to the county council for approval. It just makes sense, again, we can get additional funding, like, almost basically matching it, if not more, for, you know, an extra ten thousand dollars of, on top of the ninety thousand that we're already gonna be providing for the payment for Vista Works. What am I forgetting, Michelle? Michelle, by the way, is with Vista Works, so she's kind enough to come all the way from.
Beaver.
Beaver County, to come pay us a visit here, so.
I'm operating the mouse.
I don't operate the mouse. But I'm happy to come and answer some questions as well.
So like I said, as a board, we did recommend this to the county council for approval.
So basically, this will take the branding strategy from Hub, which gives you guys the brand, the tourism brand. It will take the Coraggio 10-year, basically 10-year plan, and will help start to implement that plan. This grant is over two years, so it doesn't have to be spent, you know, over just the next two years. The application is due on the 22nd of June, and they make recommendations or they award in August.
And I know that one of the, the big things that we're tasked with is the, you know, the T-TAP board, is to ensure that we do spend some of the, you know, the funds in, in that account. We just don't let it sit there and continue to grow. And when we felt like, you know, there's ever grant match that makes sense for, with what Vista Work wants to accomplish, as well as the tourism aspect in, in the county, we, we thought it would be a good, a good match.
Right, so right now with Vista Works, we can create your social media, and we can create organic social media, but any type of paid ad, so it's like taking an ad out in the newspaper, but it's on Google or on social media, so that would all go into this fund, into this grant. And also professional photography, making sure that, like, we are placing you guys in a really good position, because Utah is already a very tourism-heavy state, and the competition that you're, you know, that you're surrounded with, being able to level that playing field in a very professional manner, making sure that we get all of the right attributes put together, so that Morgan County is positioned very well. And also managing it and steering it, right? Because when tourism comes, like as it comes, if you're not steering it, then it starts to get rather hairy. You can ask Moab. They, they were definitely not in front of it. So it's like definitely a management aspect of staying in front of, and, and making sure that messaging is out there, and being responsible in, like, their use.
I got a question for you, Michelle. Do you know what the requirements are for the grant to make sure we're following those requirements correctly, and, and how these monies are spent?
Yeah, it's a marketing grant through the Utah Office of Tourism, and these, all of these things that they approved, these are on the list. So they have a, they have a very strict list of what's included and what's excluded, and these are included items. And transient room tax, you know, is, is collected by people that come from outside your county, and so that's where these funds are coming from. So if you stay, somebody stays in the hotel, there's a transient room tax. The state takes a very small portion and then gives the rest back to the county, but there's a state statute on these funds, and more than 60% has to be spent on marketing directly, and the other can be spent on infrastructure to assist in building out, like, you know, what you need. And that goes, that's the same thing with restaurant tax.
So will Vista Works manage the finances, or will be, I guess, who are the contract, the contract for the grant, or making sure we're following the grant correctly? I'm planning on getting it, I think it's awesome and amazing. Who will be managing that as far as the monies and how that works?
So it goes through the county, and so, I mean, you guys obviously sign off on all of the bills, but we will manage as far as, like, doing the reporting and submitting to the state and making sure that everything's compliant, because they do have some compliance things that they require, like their logo needs to be, you know, placed someplace on the website and things like that. So just making sure that we're in compliance, that, that, you know, everything follows those guidelines.
Commissioner, I think that your T-TAP board would also be in oversight, part of the, right, armed for the commission on reviewing expenses. That would probably all run through the T-TAP, or both the expenses out of your TRT funds and also from your grant. That's probably the best way to run that. Just like to see your board does for your rule. Sorry, Chris.
No, 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 you did great.
And if I could, I would give a strong recommendation from economic development. It's a, towards an outdoor recreation is a big component of your strategic plan, and moving that forward. We all know that, you know, business sense capital is usually a thing, you're undercapitalized on the cost of businesses that fail first, and so at the beginning of this, I, I see nothing but a positive on increasing, increasing your capital basically for free to really be in the right position, strategic.
And part of this also is, is they're gonna have, you know, the thing we talked about a few weeks ago, a few months ago, was on a tourism website. They'll be working on that. This will pay for anything extra we need on it. Also, running that website, from what I understand, or however you're gonna do it, but there's a lot that it's gonna help. But the big thing is, is we're getting free money there, but the dollars that are gonna be coming back into our county is what I'm looking at, is those dollars are gonna start to compound, and eventually we will have those restaurants. We will be getting, I don't know, if we're in another hotel, but, you know, we're gonna get, you know, more campgrounds. Those campgrounds help, too. And if we change any of our codes and allow glamping, or whatever it is that they were talking about before, those kinds of things all go towards TRT, which is what goes in to help with all of this. So that way, we're not just bringing in $90,000 or $100,000 a year in TRT, we're bringing in a few hundred thousand, and that's the goal.
Right, and, I mean, really, it creates such an economic impact on all of your businesses. So like the local tire shop. So it just creates, like, there's a ripple effect, and it'll create, so not only TRT, but other, other businesses will feel it as well.
I don't know how many of you knew, we had a raw, raw dairy, I mean, dairy that's raw milk, and they're also doing cheese curds, or cheese. And I just found that out the other night. So that's another option for us to bring tourism to, to bring them to a, you know, a creamery that will help as a tour. There's a lot of different things in tourism we can do, it's just getting it done. We can have them go to SOS, Deb, Spicy Pie, you know, all those kinds of things, it'd be nice. So there's a lot going on.
Any questions, Michelle?
No. So the matching dollars, $90,000 would be from the existing contract with Vista Works, that would be included as matching, so we would only include $10,000 from the...
$10,000 from the TRT.
TRT restaurant tax.
That's right.
Okay.
Yep. In addition to the 90. So I move that we, we go ahead with this proposal to do the Utah Co-op Grant for a 50-50 match. Is there anything else I need to add to that, Robert?
I think just that we're approving the expenditure of the additional $10,000 from TRT and restaurant tax.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion from Commissioner. Fackrel, second by Commissioner McConnell, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Thanks, Chris.
Guys, have a great evening.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda. I saw Bailey here a little bit earlier, but discussion about module from Casell. Sorry, Bailey and Nicole.
Yes. Both. Both. Okay, sure. Good evening, thank you for giving us the opportunity to be on the agenda tonight. We are asking the county to purchase the accounts receivable module in Casell. Casell is what the county uses, it's the accounting software that we use for cash receiving, utility management, accounts payable, human resources, payroll, and much more. And the planning department uses QuickBooks to invoice developers and residents for consulting work done on their projects. The treasurers, in the past, they have had a, their preferred way of doing things, a preferred way of accounting, which, in that time, it worked, but every year, the auditors, they come in noting that it's considered a significant deficiency in the internal control environment of their county, to have multiple accounting systems to keep track of money. The accounts receivable module would eliminate the need for QuickBooks by allowing us to create invoices in Casell. That would not only provide extra protection with having dual control, but also a much simpler way of tracking and doing our invoices. Cost of it, if you would like.
Yeah, so with Casell, the, if you'll look in the, the staff report, we received a quote from them for, the initial startup cost was $6,080. That included the training, setup, and conversion. And then yearly after that, it's $138 a month, so it equals out to $1,656 a year. With QuickBooks, we currently, just this year, paid $915.47, which it increases every year. So the difference between the two would be $740.53. That could come out of the planning department budget, which is for permanent employees, which is under, under budget, because we are severely lacking in staff currently. And then after that, so after this year, it would be figured out in the budget at the end of the year and moved to the IT department. Do you guys have any questions?
The only question I had was on the conversion from QuickBooks. It seemed like they stated a number of accounts that they would move over for that amount. Are we, do we fall within that number?
I did not see that number.
Forty accounts are included.
I, I believe we are within that, yeah.
Okay.
We don't have that many open accounts currently with developers.
And my, my question would be, with all these software companies, they try and give you as minimal as they can and get you in the backend, as far as time, as being able to be trained on this, how many hours of training is that, including? Can I tell you that?
I don't think it's possible.
It's half the time, you don't, they give you not enough hours to be trained, and then wanna charge a couple hundred bucks an hour to train.
What's nice about Casell is that they have a website with videos and videos and videos and videos and documents, training, so you can go back and re-watch and go into as much depth as you would like to. So that's what's nice about Casell, is that it's all on their website.
It's also pretty user-friendly, so without receiving any training for Casell, I've been able to navigate it just by going through each program and, you know, looking at everything. It's fairly simple.
It's also, this is just an added module to a program that we're already using, so there is experience in the county as well with using it, so I think that might be helpful as well.
It's the main program that we use in the treasurer's office, it's what we take payments on, on everything.
And it has been one of the main audit issues raised, the interaction between the QuickBooks and the Casell, and the failure to interact, so.
Garrett, have you had a chance to, by chance, look at this Casell contract that they're proposing? It doesn't, well, it's a proposal. I'm not sure, are they gonna give us any more documentation as far as a contract or anything, or?
Um, I, I'm not entirely sure on that. Jeremy was the one who received the quote from them. It's good for 90 days. We can come back with more information if you guys feel...
And I apologize, I have not reviewed this one in detail.
I'm, I'm also in conversation with Farrah Brown, the client manager, there's client services manager, and so I can talk to her further on, too, because there's some things I'd like to see changed.
So if approved, it'd be approval of the quote to move forward with an, with an agreement?
I don't know.
Yeah?
Because I'd like to read through the document, too.
Right.
Yeah. So what I can do is I can talk to Farrah and ask her to send us out everything that they would want and what they'll do, and then I can send it to Garrett, or I'll just have her copy it to Garrett after I've talked to her, and we could postpone this till the next meeting, if you wanted.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it'd be good for all of us to see the agreement.
My only other thought, Blaine, is, and we can chat about this, too, but is this a single source? Is this something that falls within our exceptions to a bid process?
Okay, all right. Yeah, because we've been looking at a lot of different things lately, one for human resources, you know, potentially changing payroll, those kinds of things, and they've also told us they would give us a certain amount of discount if we paid yearly versus monthly, and they're just pretty high, and so, I mean, I'd like to talk around to some different counties and see what they're using also. And they're a little antiquated, from what I've been told, so.
Okay. Let us know if we can help in any way.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. So are you making a motion to postpone?
Yeah, I'm making a motion, we postpone this until the next meeting, or a future meeting, whichever you guys think would be best.
Depends on how quickly...
I can get, get the information. If I can get the information, then we'll be in two weeks.
I'll second the motion.
We got a motion to... Perpetuate, postpone this till a future meeting, once we receive the correct documents, seconded by Commissioner, sorry, motion by Commissioner Fackrel, seconded by Commissioner McConnell. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. All right, next item on the, on the agenda, John Redd and Ryan Brown, discussion decision, conditional use permit for drug and alcohol residential treatment facility. I know I had a little bit of a discussion with, with Garrett, our attorney, a little bit earlier, and I don't know if we want to hear from Garrett first and then the applicant, but what's your thoughts, Garrett, on that?
So typically, if we had a planner, staff would, would go first.
Correct.
I'm happy to, to go first as well.
Okay, so let's do that, let's hear what your thoughts are, Garrett, on it, and then we'll have the applicant come and present.
Okay. I'll, I'll try to be brief. I, our previous planner said that I gave a lecture last time, and I don't intend to do that. If you want to watch the lecture, you can watch the, the planning commission meeting from before. But I do think it is appropriate to distinguish between a legislative decision and an administrative decision, because we don't always get a lot of the community out to these meetings. I would encourage you to come every time. I know that you have no obligation to, but it is good to stay informed. And I think that some frustration comes when you think that the planning commission or the commission isn't listening to you. They are listening, but the law requires them to act a certain way, depending on the decision that's being made. So for a legislative decision, as you see on our agenda, we have three public hearings under subsection G tonight. Those are all legislative decisions, where the county commission can take input from the community, and they have discretion on how they want to move forward. An administrative decision is checking the box of what the code requires, or the state code, for example, requires, and so there's no discretion. They can't say, well, we don't want this to happen, and so we're gonna vote it down. I guess they could do that, but then it exposes the county to liability, and that's just a hidden tax on, on the residents, right? If, if we're engaging in, in lawsuits. So I just wanted to point that out, and I know the commission already is very aware of this, because they see these every, every couple weeks. As I go through and, and talk about the history, for your benefit as well, I'll try and address some of the questions that came up in public comment, but I've been working with the, the applicants and also their attorney, as we've discussed conditions and so forth that have been put forward. Our county code is insufficient and non-compliant with the state, the Utah Fair Housing Act. And, and so initially, back in November, there was a discussion to amend the code. As we continued forward and did a little more research, there was a provision within the Fair Housing Act. And just for the record, this is under Utah Code 57-21-2.5. It's titled supremacy over local regulations. And subsection 1 says, "This chapter supersedes and preempts any ordinance regulation..." And subsection 1 says, "This chapter supersedes and preempts any ordinance, regulation, standard, or other legal action by a local government entity, a state entity, or the governing body of a political subdivision that relates to the prohibition of discrimination in housing." So therefore, if there's a provision within the Fair Housing Act that conflicts with our county code, then the Utah code preempts or supersedes that provision. There were questions from the residents of why that is. Under Utah Constitution, counties are political subdivisions or legal subdivisions of the state. That means that the county receives powers from the state, their delegated powers from the state. The state receives powers from the people, and so as you elect your representatives, they're making laws. But the county is bound by those laws, if that makes sense. It's not that the government closest to the people can nullify the higher government. The states can nullify federal, but the states have the power that they delegate to the federal and to the local. So hopefully that answers any questions that people have of why we have to follow the state statutes. In going through this process, the applicants worked closely with Lance. A lot of things were discussed. At the meeting, or at the last meeting, there were multiple conditions that were put into the recommendation from the Planning Commission. Some of these conditions, as I've spoken with the applicant's attorney, are not stipulated to. And by law, the county can't reasonably impose them, and I'll go through those when we get to that point. The case law is very clear that when an applicant will stipulate to a condition, that's okay. But if they don't stipulate to the condition, then the county can only impose certain reasonable conditions. The problem with some of the conditions is that they, if we're targeting, or it only applies to those with disabilities in the treatment center, then it would be considered discrimination. And that's prohibited by our Utah code. I think it is important to point out as well that, so Mr. York pointed out our code. We have some conditional use language in our code that probably should be updated as well because it allowed the county to put or put in place more restrictions than are allowed by the Utah code now. The Utah code was amended, I believe, in 2015 with regard to conditional uses. Nope, 2021. So it was amended by 2021, and it is more restrictive on what conditions we can impose. And once again, that supersedes the local code. Let's see. Ms. Kelly brought up the pending ordinance change. And that would be something that would allow what we might call a moratorium if that was engaged before the application came in. The intent was to engage in an ordinance change before the application came in. But under our, the Morgan County Land Use Code, it requires that either an applicant, a landowner that's affected by the change, submit that request, or that the Planning Commission or the county commission directs staff to do that, and so that wasn't done. Otherwise, that could be a consideration under Utah Code 17-27A-508, where it says, for example, you know, an application or an applicant is entitled to approval of land use application if the application conforms to the requirements of the applicable land use regulations, land use decisions, and development standards in effect when the applicant submits a complete application and pays all application fees, unless in the manner provided by local ordinance and before the applicant submits the application, the county formally initiates proceedings to amend the county's land use regulations in a manner that would prohibit approval of the application as submitted. And so had the county initiated formal proceedings, then it could have been paused for up to 180 days to allow a code amendment to take place. That did not happen, and so that's why it's moving forward right now. As I've talked to the applicants and their attorney, that wouldn't preclude them from suggesting a code amendment in the future because they, there's been some discussion on the limit to eight individuals, and I'll get into that a little bit later as well. There were several conditions that were brought up by the residents. Offense, condition for cameras, drug testing. These have all been mentioned by the applicant at various meetings. I went back and listened to the March 24th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting, which I was not present for. And there was discussion of basically all of these conditions, plus a couple more, that were not included. But I want to reiterate that as a county, we can't impose conditions that would be discriminatory in nature. And so a condition for offense, for example, if Mountain Green, in that zone where this residential treatment center is located, if there was a requirement for offense by all residents, then it could be required of the applicant. However, because it's not a generally applicable law that applies to all, it would be discriminatory to require it here, and that's prohibited under the FHA and the ADA. If they stipulate to that, that's a different story. And it doesn't mean that they couldn't put a fence in after the fact as well. But what the county can enforce through the conditional use permit is only what goes into the conditional use permit, not things that have been discussed in prior meetings. I think that kind of addresses the earlier questions. The Planning Commission recommended the conditional use permit for reprieve recovery with 11 conditions. And those have been listed in the staff report. I have realized, though, that number 10 was not updated to include the condition that I wrote in the memo that I sent to all of you as well, so we'll need to update that as well. But I can pull up my memo and read that for the record when we get to that point. The conditions that, after speaking with the applicant's attorney, they do not agree to are condition 6. The fence was crossed out. It was just more of a consideration, but they don't agree to the fence. They don't agree to condition 8, which is the non-smoking facility. And they don't agree to condition 11, which is the community liaison. They're not opposed to having a phone number that people can call if they do have concerns. And I believe that one of the applicants has given his phone number to most everyone anyway, and so that. But it's not a condition that is being agreed to. But they are agreeing to conditions 7, 9, and 10, as we'll read for the record in its entirety. Do you want me to continue, or any questions up to this point?
So they don't agree to 6, 8, and 11. They agree to 7, 9, and 10 in entirety. How about the remaining conditions of 1 through 5?
1 through 5, they agree. Well, number 3, I'll get into further, but they agree to 1, 2, 4, and 5.
Okay.
And these are recommendations that were given by, I mean, it was all inclusive within that group, the community group, and the Planning Commission that were doing this, or?
It was mainly from the Planning Commission at the meeting that we had on, I believe it was May 12th. The applicant's attorney was not at that meeting to advise them, though, and so I think that in follow-up discussions, they're just, you know, not that they're not willing to do this, but they didn't want it to be part of the conditions.
Okay, so they're not agreeing to 8 and 11, correct?
6, 8.
6, 8, and 11.
And 3.
And 3, you're going to explain.
And 3, we'll talk about that more.
The fence, you just mentioned fence, but I'm not seeing that as a condition.
So that was listed as a potential that would need more discussion, and that's not agreed to. But it wasn't part of the recommendation from the Planning Commission either. Because at the time, there were still some questions about, you know, maybe discussions between neighbors that would potentially be had, and I'm not sure if those discussions took place or not. Should I move on to item 3?
So I guess the one thing I would ask, I know there's been some issues raised in terms of continuing enforcement. And it's not as typical to have an agreement in place with respect to a conditional use permit because typically they just pertain to the development of the site or the facility. But some of these conditions are ongoing conditions that will require some level of monitoring. So I would propose that we have a conditional use permit agreement that with respect to the conditions that are articulated and are stipulated to by the applicant, that they be put into an agreement that gives us a right and puts in place a formal structure for receiving whatever reports or monitoring are required and that it be recorded against the property. And that would be an additional condition. Because otherwise, I'm just concerned that there isn't a good mechanism for ongoing reporting and enforcement of the conditions. And I believe that that's, I think that these conditions do address reasonably anticipated detrimental effects. There, we've identified mitigating measures. I think all of those are things that are important to the approval of the conditional use permit application and its continuance on an ongoing basis.
Okay, I agree, and I can work with their attorney on that conditional use agreement. And we can just add that as a condition. Do you want me to address item 3 now? Okay, so item 3, our county code. For all its flaws, it does have three things that can be imposed on a residential treatment facility for the elderly or the handicapped. And one of those is the 24-hour supervision, another is the limit of eight individuals being housed. I received a six-page memo from their attorney last week, going through some case law with regard to increasing the number of individuals that could be housed in the home. The recent request was to bump that up to 14 to 16 individuals. Our code, however, prohibits that. And my initial conversation with Lance and one of their attorneys, a prior attorney that I worked with on this case, was to amend the code because it was deficient, number one. That didn't happen. Now we have superseding provisions within the Utah State Code that allow us to move forward without ignoring our code completely. However, the eight individual limit is not one of those. It's not in the state code. It doesn't put limits on that. And so at this point, the request for the 14 to 16 would, it would require the commission to ignore our code, which I have, as I've been here, you know that I don't suggest. I say comply with the code or change it. There's been times where, you know, there's great arguments that have been made, but there's a legal process through that decision where they could amend the code. And I did suggest that to their attorney on November 9th, and so they've had that time to amend the code since then. The number of individuals was brought up at the May 12th meeting, and that was the first time that I was aware of that, and Lance also indicated that that was the first time he'd heard of that. And then, and that was 8 to 10, maybe 12, and then the 14 to 16 was communicated to me last Tuesday. There isn't anything that they were able to find in the state code that would supersede or preempt our own code with relation to that. So my suggestion is to comply with our code. I have spoken with their attorney, and we met together a couple of weeks ago. And I said, "You're always welcome to go through a code amendment process, even if the conditional use is passed by the commission today." They could always submit a code amendment and then expand the conditional use later. So that avenue isn't barred to them. However, the, in the memo, they were referencing cases mainly from the Third Circuit, some from the Seventh Circuit. And there's really only one case that they referenced from the Tenth Circuit, which is actually binding. Because Utah is in the Tenth Circuit, the others are persuasive. And in that case, it's called Cinnamon Hills Youth Crisis Center Incorporated versus St. George City. And Justice Gorsuch was on the Tenth Circuit at the time. He gave the opinion. And there, the thrust of the memo from the applicant's attorney was that it's necessary to have 14 to 16 for the center to, for the residents of the center to have the best experience possible. It was necessary. And in the opinion, I just wanted to read a few paragraphs because he gets to this case where the applicant was suing St. George saying that "You failed to accommodate" because the case law does require that reasonable accommodations are made by jurisdictions, if it can be shown. Well, I'll just read it. This is under 42 United States Code, Section 3604, Subsection F3B. And it says, "A reasonable accommodation is required whenever it may be necessary to afford a disabled person equal opportunity to use and enjoy a dwelling." Then he continues, "What does it mean to be necessary? The word implies more than something merely helpful or conducive. It suggests instead something indispensable, essential, something that cannot be done without." And then later, he says, "Put simply, the statute requires accommodations that are necessary or indispensable or essential to achieving the objective of equal housing opportunities between those with disabilities and those without." And so the legal memo that I received from the applicant's attorney was saying that it's best when there's groups of 6 to 8 for therapy. And statistics show that if you get 8, usually 1, maybe 2 drop out. But then you'd still be within that 6 to 8 range. Then they said that there's also literature that suggests having groups of males and females together and each have, you know, 6 to 8 can be beneficial as well. However, the question is, is it necessary? Is it indispensable? And I did want to acknowledge Jacob Robison. He's my intern, and he helped me with a lot of the research, just pulling stuff together. Did a really great job. But as he was researching and sending things for me to look at, the literature, the jury's still out, so to speak. And what it does show is that primarily, you know, gender really doesn't become an issue for purposes of recovery unless it's female only. There seems to be better. better uh, results when it's female only rather than a mixed gender, because some females don't feel comfortable going to a facility where there's males also. And so, based on the literature, based on what we've been independently able to gather, my recommendation is that making a reasonable accommodation to go above and beyond the eight that's within our code isn't necessary under the interpretation of this Tenth Circuit decision. Um, just a couple more things to read from this decision. Um, he continues, of course, in some sense, all reasonable accommodations treat the disabled not just equally, but preferentially. Right? Because even in our code, for example, um, it defines a family under eight dash two dash one of our code. It's, it says that family is any one of the following who occupy a dwelling. First, uh, one person living alone, second, two or more persons related by blood, marriage, adoption, so on and so forth. The third is up to five unrelated individuals living together as a single housekeeping unit. Or, the fourth, they say, a group of persons with a disability living in a residential facility for persons with a disability as permitted by this title. What's permitted by this title is that you can go up to eight. And so they're receiving even more preferential treatment than a group of five unrelated individuals, which would be the non-disabled under, under what um, Justice Gorsuch is saying here. So the last thing I'll, I'll read is it says, um, but while the FHA requires accommodations necessary to ensure the disabled receive the same housing opportunities as everybody else, it does not require more or better opportunities. The law requires accommodations overcoming barriers imposed by the disability that prevent the disabled from obtaining a housing opportunity others can access. But when there is no comparable housing opportunity for non-disabled people, the failure to create an opportunity for disabled people cannot be called necessary to achieve equality of opportunity in any sense. So this, uh, I, I think the county is on solid ground by holding to our statute or our code until it's changed, by saying that their accommodation that they, they wrote to allow for fourteen to sixteen, it's not necessary under, under the evidence that's been presented so far. And the burden is on the applicant to produce that evidence. Um, one other district court case I think is on point. Uh, this is from two thousand twenty, and it's called Aetna Properties LLC versus Holiday City. This is also in Utah. And um, similar approach, a residential treatment center was trying to get a reasonable accommodation for twelve residents instead of the four the area was zoned for. It's a, you know, the court found that the accommodation was not necessary because the plaintiffs failed to prove it was medically necessary to the treatment of the residents. The court said the code already gave them preferential treatment because it allowed six residents for residential treatment centers, and giving it more would be more than putting them on equal footing. So very similarly as here, except that they had even smaller numbers than, than Morgan County. They had four and six, we have five and eight. But at that point, um, in, like I said, this is in two thousand twenty, they found that it was not necessary. So uh, I, I just wanted to bring that up because, and, and just acknowledge that I have been speaking with their attorney, we have addressed that. And my recommendation would, it would be to keep that condition and allow the applicant, if they want to change our, our code, they can move forward with that process.
So that's helpful, thank you.
Thank you.
And I think a number of jurisdictions, the, the unrelated individual family designation is three or four. So five is actually higher than many.
And even for residential treatment, this one was six, and ours is eight, so we're already, we're in that sweet spot of the six to eight. Yeah, the six to eight, which has been verified through the literature as being positive.
In a reasonable accommodation type of statute, we don't have that in place, we'd have to build that. And I, you know, in some respects, it's going to relate to the size of the home. I mean,
And, and they have indicated that.
We visited the pity palace in Florence, and it was massive. They probably could house a thousand people there, but, you know. But in a regular, single-family home, you start to stretch the limits of what they're designed for. This is a fairly good-sized home here, but.
And their attorney did point out that under um, the state regulatory agency that regulates residential treatment facilities, they require, uh, and the applicant can probably speak to this better than I do, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it might be sixty square feet per person in a room. But there may be, you know, you have to have at least a room of this size. But if you have three people, it'd need to be a hundred and eighty square feet for that room. So there are things that are put in place, but that, those um, administrative rules are not part of the Fair Housing Act in Utah that would supersede our own code.
Okay.
But I think the applicant can speak to, and, and I, I wanted to confirm what I had spoken with their attorney about as far as what they were stipulating to and not. Um, but I didn't have a waiver, and so I'll just let you either confirm or deny what I've said up here as well.
Okay, any other questions or comments from commissioners?
I'm gonna have questions afterwards, so.
Okay. Okay, if you'd like to come forward, applicant. I don't know if you're, I don't know which applicant you are, but.
I'm John Redd.
John, thank you.
Um, and I'm grateful for that purity here, grateful that um, you're willing to give us the time um, tonight. As it was stated, we filed for a um, business license in October. Um, we did receive the email in November. Um, and the email told us that the state code, or that the county code should be updated sometime mid-December. Um, and we have been to um, four Planning Commission meetings. Um, two of them as public hearings, and two of them as work sessions. Um, to try to see what we could answer and see what we could do. Our goal here is to set up a treatment facility um, for adults, um, simply help people who struggle with drug addiction, alcoholism. Um, we recognize there's a need in this community. I personally have worked at some large facilities, um, ran and directed some, and we feel like we could do, we feel like we could be a benefit to the residents here and to the people around us. Um, I'd be happy to answer any specific questions you have um, at this point, if you'd like to, and um, I'll see what I can answer. Um, there were a couple of things um, that I just took notes on as we were going through. And it, we, what we were hoping to do, and it was sixty um, square feet per individual, per bedroom. And so all we were looking to do was see if we could get a, an amount of residents that the state would provide. Part of the reason for that um, is that kind of the main book on group psychotherapy was written in nineteen seventy and is still considered almost to be the Bible, says that it's eight to twelve people. Yarrow wrote the book, and it's um, it's the theory and practice of group psychotherapy. It says that you're looking for twelve to eight people, and so the reason that we were looking for that was we felt it would, we felt it would simply be able to help the people who came to us better. It's not looking to overstep a place, it's not. What we're looking to do is make sure there's a lot of turnover um, at these places. So if we're capped at eight, it will barely be at eight. Um, and that's always been my experience. So that was part of um, what I was hoping to address there, but I can see if I can answer any questions at the commissioners' side. I'd be happy to, if I can. And if not, I can um, we can have their coordinate that.
I, I would just point to their, their memo by their attorney, they do cite um, a minimum of six to eight participants, and the source, when looking at the source that they cited, the literature does not provide strong empirical evidence, but practitioners consistently recommend six to eight as optimal. And it, and so there may be other sources that I'm, I'm not aware of, or that weren't included in the memo, but I did want to point that out, that did come from, from their attorney.
Yeah, we, we had a um, about fifty pages to send, and decided just to chop that down and see if we could just make it workable. And that's what we're trying to do. We've um, throughout this process, all we, all we've wanted to do is come alongside. We haven't, um, or at least that, my impression is that we haven't been here to, to fight the county, to fight anybody. We worked really well with Lance, I was in um, contact with him about once a week. A lot of discussions, and a lot of back and forth, and um, just trying to see what we could do to, to get this up and going.
So, John?
Yes.
The, Garrett went through um, except, the conditions six, eight, and eleven is those that weren't stipulated to. But can we just confirm the other ones you're in agreement with?
Um, one, yes, obviously, it's only, only way we'll get a business license. Two is not a problem. Three is the one that we've discussed quite a bit. Four, um, not a problem. In that we will have twenty-four-hour supervision while residents are in the facility. So it's, the residents that will be with us will always be supervised. The fire sprinkler system, I've spoken with the fire chief, and we're just waiting to see if we can get a business license, having come out and tell us how we need to put that together. So that's, we're planning on that as well. One of the things with six, um, we were asked to print out envelopes for um, all the homes in the, like ninety homes in the immediate area. And over a third of those homes that we um, were given names and addresses for and asked to print out the envelopes were owned by LLCs, trusts, or um, IRA accounts. All accounts that have some level of limited liability. And so, we didn't agree with six at all, because we felt like with the insurance that we put on a property, which is a one million dollar individual or the three million dollar aggregate, um, that we're required to hold by the state, that that should comply with, with what's needed, but it felt discriminatory to be the only place owned by something similar and required to do it. Do you want me just to keep going down then? Sorry.
Yeah, and I'm just confirming, you know, because it sounds like there wasn't like a written confirmation as to which conditions were.
No, we, we don't have a written confirmation as to what, as to what it was. And part of, part of the concern when we met with Garrett was that um, one sentence doesn't quite cover what he's asking us to do. So having a liaison, um, I said, I'd, I'd be more than happy to be the liaison. I plan to be at the facility the majority of the time. I live in Farmington, I'm fifteen minutes away, twenty tops with traffic. Um, and I said I'd be happy to do that, but what, like, what are the requirements there? I'm happy to hold a weekly meeting with community residents, I'm happy to, whatever I need to do, but we couldn't, we didn't have any specifics on it. And so some of these things were just so general, we didn't have a way of putting it together. As far as um, for instance, like smoking, we, our intent is to make it a non-smoking facility. Um, but at the Planning Commission meeting, um, it wasn't quite qualified what that meant until the discussion was had. And so did that mean vaping? Did that mean non-vaping? Did that mean just lighted smoking material? And so, a lot of these things were difficult to agree to because they, they felt very vague.
I, I understand. I mean, Garrett knows I had issues with six anyway. You know, that's a tough one, I, I don't, personal guarantee for liability to whom, you know. So, that's a, that's a tough one. So, but, so, and then there's not agreement on eight, if I understand, and not agreement on eleven, but the seven, nine, and ten, we understand are, and ten needs to be further articulated to in, include the specific statutory reference to go to your specificity argument.
Absolutely. And, and so that's part of what we're looking for, like, we're happy to have these discussions and happy to um, to see what we can figure out, but it, it's just not very specific.
So that's, that's one of the reasons why I suggested the agreement. One is because these are conditions that relate to ongoing operation as much as establishment of the facility from the outset. And, and I think that it provides additional clarity for the county and additional clarity for the applicant as we work through those things. And so um, that's going to be my recommendation, that we add a condition requiring there to be an agreement that articulates the conditions and, and sets forth what the respective obligations are and how we monitor it going forward and so forth.
Absolutely, Mr. McConnell, and that was my concern, is that if we have a conditional use permit that allows us to just use this and have a business license based on these conditions, but the conditions weren't effectively articulated, I didn't want to run the risk of having that, having the license hold.
It's understandable, I understand that. But I also understand the concerns of the residents.
Absolutely.
You know, it's a, this is the kind of care that people need. And, and ideally, people would say yes, and to the extent they need it, it should be located in a commercial area. And if you were actually providing detox or something like that, you would have to put it in a commercial area as opposed to a residential. But when you're talking about the intervening facility between when they receive that kind of medical care and intensive treatment, to where they transition and live in their own house on their own, putting them in a residential context appears to be the best, at least from the literature that I've read. And there are people, I, I can't imagine there's anyone in this room that hasn't had a family member at some degree, or a close friend that hasn't been touched by addiction uh, to various substances. And so, suggesting that we, there is no place for it is, is difficult as well. But I, I mean, I understand the concerns, the fencing, obviously. If you have an adjoining property, you have the ability to put in a fence as well if you want to. And I would encourage, you know, the respective property owners to cooperate on that and, and participate in the cost. I understand the legal point that, that Garrett made, that, you know, we don't require that as a standard requirement in the county code. People are given the opportunity to fence their properties as they want to. It may be a requirement under your restrictive covenants and conditions in the neighborhood, but I suspect that if it was required, there would already be a fence there.
Yeah.
The, the traffic concerns, I, I, I mean, I was looking at something in the code today, and, and when they triggered the requirement for a traffic study, and, you know, the Planning Department Director was given the discretion to require it, but only after he anticipated that the daily counts would be a thousand. Now that's in a commercial context, not a residential. But I believe your applicants don't, or your residents won't have their own vehicles.
They won't have their own vehicles, and they won't have access to vehicles.
And, and so, I mean, the average in Utah for a single-family residence is thirteen and a half trips per day. You're going to have staff coming in on a daily basis, and some that live there full-time. But I can't imagine you're going to get a lot higher than the thirteen trips per day with that, but, but even if it were doubled. I, I mean, when I had my teenagers at home and going to school, we clearly exceeded the thirteen trips per day. Usually by ten o'clock, we had exceeded that.
I relate.
But I, I don't, so I don't see the traffic concerns raised in some of the correspondence as being as significant as suggested. And certainly, there's no study, and we don't have a study requirement for this type of a use. But, but it- have a study requirement for this type of a use. But I appreciate you working with the community, and I would encourage you to continue to do so.
Yes.
With all of these sorts of issues.
Yeah, this initially, just to give you maybe a little bit more context, this initially came about, I am in recovery. I was diagnosed with stage four cancer in '03, was given OxyContin. And it took many years for me to finally get well. I've been given a life today that I just cannot imagine having, because I've never had it before. And our hope is, is that we can give this to other people. I have lost a couple brother-in-laws to this disease and a couple folks. And what I've found is that people are dying needlessly. And we're looking to just essentially set up a place where people can heal. And that's our hope.
It's a noble objective, and there's a lot of caring people here. And I, you know, it's always difficult when it's proposed, it's new, and it's right next to you.
Yeah, it's scary.
And, you know, so the way you operate this will be significant in terms of the way that it's received and treated going forward, assuming there's a motion to approve the conditional use permit, at least once we get the agreement in place.
Can I ask a couple questions?
Yeah.
I just want to give you an opportunity to respond to the accusations of the way you went about bringing the facility into Morgan, of not pulling a building permit, not doing things according to the ordinances of our county and stuff like that. Why?
What are the accusations? I haven't heard all the accusations, to be candid with you.
You weren't here earlier when?
No, I wasn't. I had reached out and asked when to be here and was told.
So did you start building before you pulled the permit?
We did. So the main reason we started building, or started demolition, was that we got the house inspected for methamphetamine. It's one of the things that you can do when you purchase a home. And the methamphetamine use in that house was significant enough that we pulled floors, that we had to redo some walls and some things like that. So we started that process. While in that process, what happened is we found out that all the insulation had been chewed out of the house by squirrels and chipmunks and things along those lines, and that a lot of it was falling apart. So we had started that. We had reached out. We had had, do you remember his name, Dave?
Dave Rich.
Up to the home.
Dave Webster.
Dave Webster, thank you. That's it.
Oh, that always makes up the fire.
So we had Dave Webster up to the home to ask to walk him through, and that was a few months ago. So we tried to involve that part of the process. One of the things that we were told as we were going through is that we couldn't submit any, and this is what Dave told us, is that we couldn't submit any major designs. So the majority of the stuff that we were doing was superficial until we received a business license. And so what's happened is we were under the assumption initially that the code was going to be amended by December. And we've been sitting on a home that has not had any use, still doesn't have flooring in there, waiting for this process so that we can submit plans. And we've gone in and we just decided to submit plans anyways in hopes that they would get approved.
So what about the garage part? Because you put the garage doors on, according to what people have said.
Yeah, we added a new garage door because it wasn't.
But you turned them into bedrooms, or did you not?
No, we don't have a bedroom in the garage. All we've looked to do in the garage so, I'll tell you a concern that we have, and then I'll address this. One of the concerns that we have is that some of the folks who came to the house, first was an architect and the second was somebody working on garage doors, saying that somebody was coming to the house who was driving a dark silver Volkswagen Toray and let themselves into the home to walk through the home. And I think it's because it's highly, I think it's because there's a lot of concerns about what's going on there, but it's still private property. And so people are going through the home, and if they're taking pictures and, like, what they've essentially done is trespass legally without permission of the homeowners to try to figure this stuff out. And what we've done is submitted it. The thought with the garage is absolutely not a bedroom. It was to put a shed on one side of the garage because the shed behind the house was literally falling apart. So I have the one, the one-car part of the garage, be a shed area where we can keep a snowmobile, some lawnmowers and things along those lines. And so it was just to separate it so that if we have residents in the house, they don't have access to the gasoline, they don't have access to all the equipment and utilities. So it's broken apart. As far as a bedroom in the garage, absolutely no.
And you haven't received any kind of red tag or violation for proceeding with the demolition?
No.
Without a permit. I don't know what permitting is required to change a garage door. Probably none. But I don't know what level of permit for interior demolition activity is even required under our code, so.
And I don't think that is. I guess my thought was, was it just seems underhanded a little bit to not come in saying, this is a commercial thing, this is, we're running a commercial business here, you know. And so we finance a commercial building, we put our utilities under a commercial name, we do all the things that you would normally do in a commercial situation where you're going to run a business out of it.
Yeah.
Instead of putting everything in personal names and then.
Well, we don't have a business license yet. And so.
You have a name. You have an LLC.
We have an LLC, but we didn't candidly know whether or not we were getting a license. And we're still not, obviously, there. But a lot of these things, the home was purchased, the home was purchased as investment property, and the thought became is that we can really do something special with this place. And so it wasn't just purchased with this endgame in mind when it was initially purchased.
That's a lie.
How would you know what we are thinking, sir? Like, how would you?
I'm sorry. Can I just step in real quick?
Yeah.
This is, we have an applicant who's discussing with the commissioners. Those are in the public. You actually had your time for public comment, so we're not going to receive any public comment. If you want to have discussion with the applicant, please do so after the meeting. Thank you.
But I will address.
I do think it's fair to say that the intent was to have a CUP from the very beginning before you purchased the house, because you applied for the license in October and didn't purchase the house.
Well, we walked through the house four or five times trying to figure out what to do with the home. And then as we got further in the process, we thought, this is not a great home as far as the way it's set up interiorly, but that we could turn it into something pretty amazing.
And I can agree with that. I just think it is what it is. You can't have it both ways by saying, well, we submitted in October and now we're here. Well, I talked to your attorney about submitting a code amendment November ninth, and now we're here, and you're wanting us to ignore our code. So I'm just saying, just be consistent, because we've had the discussion in my office. You know where I stand, and I just want us to be honest and say it is what it is. Call a spade a spade and be accountable for what you did and not accountable for what you didn't.
So when did you purchase the property?
October.
So it was just last year?
November.
You purchased it in November, but.
We started looking at it in July, well, August, and had written up a couple.
What was your, what was your initial plan with it when you did it as an investment property? Were you going to just flip it and turn it around? Or were you planning on doing this reprieve?
We were open to, we were open to whatever it was. So it wasn't like it was set to be reprieved.
Okay. I can be very facetious with this if you wanted to in a minute.
I can comment to that real quick, if I may. I'm one of the other owners. I'm Ben Scanlon. Ryan, who's the other owner, he was in contact with me at that time before they had purchased it. And he said, hey, I see this home up here. We had been looking. And in fact, we looked at one in Echo?
No.
Anyway, there was another home we were looking at as well, because our families were pretty close. And so we were looking at some, I'm from Arizona, to get away from Arizona with our families together. And he said, I see this home. So I'm like, okay, whatever. We'll see what we can do with it. So we had had those discussions, not necessarily, because I had nothing to do with his business at that time. And so when he came to me in November or December, after it was purchased, and he said, hey, we purchased the home, and this is what we're thinking of doing. And he gave me the business plan at that point, after that point. So it wasn't, it wasn't something when he discussed it with me in August that he was just going to do a treatment facility. So that was never, that was never his intent when I talked to Ryan. I never talked to John, so I'm not sure what his mind was. But when I was talking to Ryan, who I think was the original purchaser, his intent was just to buy an investment home, like he said. And we had looked at other homes to turn it into a retreat for like Thanksgiving for our families and things like that. So the reprieve recovery deal didn't come up until way later, until he could figure out another business model or something like that, so.
So why did you pick that area for the treatment center then?
Sorry?
Why did you pick that area for a treatment center?
That area?
Yeah.
In walking through the home, the way the home is set up with the bedrooms, they are separated, not huge living areas, but would be good group rooms, not the way homes are built nowadays. And having worked at multiple treatment centers, the home felt like a place where people could heal.
So at what stage do you bring people in? I mean, I know it's a business, but at what stage do you bring them into this facility? Are they?
Clients?
Yeah, clients.
Once we've gone through the state licensing process, and once we get a.
And they're recovering.
No, I meant not that. The clients.
After the detox.
Okay, so it's after detox. And a lot of that is determined by insurance companies on what an insurance company qualifies for. So if somebody's been sober six months and decides they want to come into a treatment facility, you're generally never going to find an insurance company to pay you for that. But usually, somebody will go to a detox or go to get sober. And as they're initially trying in the process, need more help and care, that's where residential facilities come into play. I don't know if that answers it.
That's okay. I'm just curious on this fencing. Since you're in an A20 zone, that's for livestock. We're a fence in. You've got to fence in. Just as a thought for you guys, A20 zoning is agriculture. A20 zoning, and I don't know how we got a less than one acre lot in an A20 zone. But in A20 zone, you have to fence in. So I'd think it'd be your responsibility to put up a fence.
I.
But you're going to have to tell me differently.
Yeah, I will, because it's not required, it's not required of all the other residents who also live there. And so under the ADA and FHA, we can't impose a condition that is discriminatory in nature. So requiring one person to do what we don't require all residents to do.
So I have a question then for you, Garrett. Is this A20, why is it a residential area if it's A20?
Because the prior commission that sat in your seats messed up. They didn't update it completely. And so we inherit, when we come to these seats, we inherit what's there, and we hope to not create problems for the future.
So they didn't update the zone. I mean, the neighborhood's been there for.
It's been there for longer than you've been alive. Well, it's been there since I was a kid.
So John, can I ask you a question? Are you amenable to, I know Commissioner McConnell mentioned a conditional use agreement, and it might discuss or include monitoring, reporting, enforcing. I know a few of the residents, when they discussed their concerns, that these were some of the concerns. Are you amenable to a conditional use agreement?
Yeah, if we can qualify it and quantify it, certainly. As far as the reporting and things like that, we do have things that we will have to be cognizant of, which is HIPAA laws. Like, we can't provide people's names who are seeking treatment or things along those lines. But there'll be a way that we can work together. I'm certain of that.
I, you know, you made a comment earlier about the staff recommendations and there not being very good details in those staff recommendations. And I'd actually also look from the other side and say, I don't, I don't know of any typical resident that understands all the requirements that you have to go through and what's needed there. And I think that's a little bit of the fear of the unknown, is not knowing really how it's ran and how it's operated. I know the concerns of doorways and how they exit and what could happen and what's the processes. And so I don't want to go into a lot of details, but I do think if there's this agreement on how that is operated and works and runs, that at least we would know better than what we know now.
Certainly.
So, do you want a motion?
I'd love to just say something before you do.
Let's see if we can come up with a good motion.
Before we do, he can be figuring out the motion first. In my prior years, I used to work with people that were halfway between in their education areas. And I think it's commendable, unfortunately for the residents of this area, they don't know what they don't know yet. This is an area that I think the community could probably work around if they want, or they can completely just disregard it and hate everything in life. I'm not saying one way or another which way I'm going to vote when the motion comes up, but I'm concerned that you guys have not been forthright with the community. You have not, I mean, originally it was just going to be for something else. Now it's going to be for something else, and now it's this. What are you going to be able to give back to the community if we allow it to happen? Are you going to be able to help the community, to help them mend or to help them to know what's going on? And I agree with you, under HIPAA laws and FERPA laws and all those other content picking laws, you know, there's, there's things that you've got to work with within the community to make it nice. Just as from an agricultural standpoint, I have a farm, or I had a farm, and that farm, or I still do a partial farm, but somebody else moved in next to it. Yeah, we had disagreements all the time about the smell. They moved into that area. And I says, you moved into it. I'm going to have tractors out that late at night. I'm sorry, I'm doing all these things. Then we ended up having a very good disagreement. And then we've had to make up for it. And just being congenial with each other, I think, is a good thing. I don't know if that's what the community wants, but, and I understand totally all these different things that you guys are going through, but be forthright and honest upfront, instead of us having to question you now about some untrustworthy, not honest things that may have been perceived, because we don't know the truth, but they're perceptions. And I appreciate the fact that you have recovered, and I know what that can be like. So, anyway, just my thoughts. Now, you're welcome to go ahead.
Thank you. Can I just stick to that, Mr. Paco, real quick? At the places that I've been, we've been a good asset to the communities, a lot of service and a lot of, a lot of trying to give back, and that's the intent with this place. And hoping that there's an opportunity to be able to do that. and hoping that there's an opportunity to be able to do that. And so, it's, um, part of recovery is being able to give back to the people around you, and I hope is that we can do that.
So Garrett, if we were to approve this, without it being completed, how long can the CUP be for? And they have to come back with information before we can truly approve it, so tell us the legalities.
Well, you can approve it, and I believe Commissioner McConnell's gonna make a, a condition of approval that a conditional use agreement agreeable to both the county and the applicant is signed, and so you can approve it today, subject to that condition. Now, if for some reason the county and the applicant can't come to an agreement on the conditional use agreement, then it may need to come back. But, but the, the hope would be that we can work together. So, am I understanding your intent?
In part.
Okay.
I'm actually, if you're ready for a motion, I'll make it. I'll make a motion to postpone the John Red, Ryan Brown, conditional use permit for a drug and alcohol residential treatment facility pending negotiation of an agreement specific to the conditional use permit application, setting forth the conditions set in the staff report excluding exceptions six, eight, and 11, the agreement to specify, um, in greater detail those conditions, and the conditions for monitoring and enforcement thereof.
Can we increase that?
Can I read that one more time?
Before you do, before you do, can you increase the umbrella, the liability umbrella, to at least two million?
It's one three right now.
Oh.
It's one million individuals, three million.
Okay.
An aggregate.
Okay, alright, that's fine.
And so, it, it's similar, I'd just like to see the agreement as part of my vote to approve.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, we've got a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it, postpone.
Okay, is there any comments or any more discussions on the motion?
But I, I would hope that we would have an agreement, a real good agreement between the citizens, or not.
Well, the agreement will be between the county and the applicant.
And the applicant.
And it will be based upon these recommendations.
Maybe I won't go and give them a second.
Correct, but, like, let's specify the section of the code and so forth.
Right, yeah, we can do that.
So does that mean it has to come back to us then to final approval, or not?
Yes, it does. Alls we're doing is postponing it, so that it comes back with an agreement that we can all look at and get comfortable with.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner McConnell, and I can't decide if you decided to second the motion.
At first, I did, and second, I didn't, now I will go ahead with that second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Fackrell.
Because it's a postponement.
Um, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes with all voting aye. Alright, thank you, thank you.
Is that postponed, sorry, to the 21st, or is it just as soon as we can get the agreement?
Yeah, we can get the agreement done by the 21st, the 21st is great.
Residents, thank you for coming. Um, hopefully, we've tried to do our best to address your concerns, we're still working on it, um, but, but thank you for your comments and your concerns, and, um, for being here tonight, appreciate it. Okay. Um, we're just gonna have a quick five-minute break, we'll reconvene at, um, eight o'clock.
You guys keep rolling through the bullet, do you have?
Yeah. Yes.
We should be done by 10:00.
The, the commercial portion, or something like that?
Yeah, and we just have to find one.
Transportation impact fee.
Right.
Actually, I'm fine. I'm fine.
Okay, welcome back, we've got a much more reduced audience out here, so. Um, next item on our, uh, agenda, we've got, um, John Cannon, discussion decision on transportation impact fees.
John's in Lake Powell.
Okay, so are you?
Hey, can you trade them, can you trade them, this one and the next one then?
Yeah, but I don't think you'll make it from Lake Powell. I, I mean, I guess, I don't wanna vote on it, but, because I'm involved in it.
Explain it.
But, um, in the past, in all the hangars that we've built in the past, um, for some reason, the county continues to impose the impact fee of a commercial building, and, um, then the applicants have to come in and ask for their money back.
After?
After.
After.
After seven years.
No.
No, it's, so there's a, there's a mechanism.
They'll come in and ask the same thing.
They ask the same thing.
Okay.
And they've always given it to them, but I don't know why we don't change that, so it just gets impacted as it should.
Well, we have a standard commercial impact fee, it's charged to various commercial users, but under the Impact Fee Act, an applicant could come in and demonstrate that the, given their particular use of the property, that the impact fee is, is higher than it needs to be.
I see.
And so, with respect to the hangars, they've come in and said, look, your commercial impact fee is anticipating a commercial use of the property, we actually prohibit commercial uses of the hangars, with the exception of subleasing space to other pilots to store their planes, and they don't generate the kind of traffic that would justify the commercial traffic impact fee. And so, I'd make a motion that we approve a reduction of the impact fee for the identified hangars consistent with our past practice. I don't know the exact amount, so, uh, we'll have to look that up, but that would be my motion. We'll, we'll treat them consistently with the hangars that we've, the impact fee reduction that we've done over the last several years for hangars at the airport.
No, no, I'll second it, because there's only three of us.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner McConnell, a second by Commissioner Fackrell, um, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, so we've got, um, Julie, three ayes, and then Commissioner Wilson is sustaining from the roll, right?
Yep.
Abstaining.
Abstaining, thank you, abstaining from the roll. Okay, um, next item, we've got, and I don't know, did Commissioner Newton talk to anybody about this item?
No, but we have to do it anyway.
Oh, okay.
I know exactly what it is.
I do too.
Okay, let's have, I don't know which one of you wanna take it then, okay, Commissioner Wilson.
I've been seconding all day.
So, um, the Republican Committee, um, met Saturday, interviewed the two applicants, um, to, for interim county treasurer, um, Kimberly Harrison was chosen to submit to the state, and so it comes before us to, to, I guess, ratify that, I don't know, is that what they're doing, Robert?
We have to ratify it, and then he-
And then you send it to the state?
No, so under the code, you have five days after receiving the name to approve it.
Okay.
If you don't, then it's sent within 10 days to the lieutenant, or to the governor to, to appoint.
So it's just with or without our approval?
Mm-hmm. Well, if you approve, then it doesn't go to the governor. The governor only gets involved if you, for some reason, say pass or whatever.
Are we within the five-day period?
You are.
Saturday.
It was Saturday.
Great.
That worked out well.
So Sunday, Monday, Tuesday.
It did.
So that means we need to turn it over to the clerk, and the clerk needs to send it through.
So the clerk won't send it through, let me pull up the statute. The clerk only sends it to the governor if you don't take action.
Okay.
Within the five days.
So Jared's gonna have to do it then, because Mike's not, or no, Mike might be around. Somebody has to sign a letter.
Whatever we need to sign, we can get it signed.
So do you want me to make a motion?
That would be great.
I mean, I make a motion that we approve Kimberly Harrison as the interim county treasurer, um, based on the decision of the Republican Committee.
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a motion made by Commissioner Wilson, second by Commissioner Fackrell, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Now, does that mean she is, has to run this year, or is it to fulfill his term?
So she'll serve the unexpired term, which is through, well, um, except that because this appointment is taking place prior to a general election.
Sixty-five.
It'll just be through the end of the year. There's a portion of the code that talks about, um, the Republican Party will submit a name for the ballot, the Democratic Party could as well, or someone could apply to run unaffiliated. If someone of the same party would also like to run, they can file for a write-in, so there's a number of ways to get on the ballot in November.
And so, Leslie needs to go and submit the notice, is that correct?
So Leslie will establish deadlines for each of these, um, well, they have to notify the, the voters, and they have to set deadlines that are not to be, that have to be, uh, done by September 2nd, so that's no later than 65 days before the day of the next general election. And do you want me to read what that is?
No, it's fine, I've read it. It's just for anybody else that wants to know.
Yeah.
May I ask, does she start? Because she works right now for the assessor's office. Can she give them a little warning and start on Monday, in this new position?
Any thoughts on that?
The statute says that they're appointed.
That means they're tomorrow.
So she do, so she does both jobs for October?
I'm sure they can coordinate between the two, listen.
Yeah.
She's here in wondering.
Yeah.
What to do, Glenn?
Well, I mean, I guess you tell Gwen she's been appointed and needs to move over to the treasurer's duty as soon as possible.
I think Gwen knows. Gwen knows, right?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so I'd say she starts tomorrow, or they work it out between the two?
Yeah, just work it out.
Yeah, just work it out.
We're a little county, we have to just work together.
Yep.
And Nicole will step to her other position, correct?
She does, because she was-
Deputy treasurer.
She was designated as the temporary, so there's really three-
People in that-
-positions that the statute outlines. The first is the temporary, that serves until the interim, and then the elected will start as of January.
Right. So does the compensation start tomorrow also, with this compensation that that elected position receives?
Yes.
Okay, that's your job. Yep.
Well, congratulations. We're excited.
Quite excited.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the next agenda item. Discussion decision on the approval of state contract, including Natural History Museum participation. Oh, go ahead, Garrett. Sorry.
The temporary is not, does not take an oath of office.
That's right. Oh, she has to be given an oath of office.
An interim must be sworn in.
So do we do that?
Technically, I'm interim, Leslie's interim.
But you guys were sworn in.
And we were sworn in, and you have to take that oath of office.
When does a sworn in have to, when does that have to happen?
So to discharge the duties, it would, I mean, it should be now.
Right now?
I don't know that we were prepared for that, but I can pull up the Utah Constitution and get you the language if you'd like.
If you, are you okay with that, Kimberly? You okay with, do we do that? Yeah, let's do it right now. Let's get it taken care of.
Okay.
So if you want to come on up and we'll swear you in, Garrett, we'll swear you in. Does that sound right?
No.
You actually have to.
You should do it.
You should do it.
The chair. You can come up and get some pictures, too, if you want, while I'm locating the I don't know.
It's something like I do routinely swear and use bad language.
I've heard her solemnly swear before.
So have I. All right, my mother swore, too.
Do you have a Bible? Okay, so yeah, have you raised your right hand, and then just repeat after them. It doesn't say, she's got to say her name, though, isn't she?
Yeah, you can say your name. This, this one is just general.
I say, Kimberly Harrison. I, Kimberly Harrison.
Do you solemnly swear that I will support?
Do you solemnly swear that I will support?
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Thank you. If you want a picture with him, you can have it.
Do you want a picture?
With all of us? Do you want a picture with all of us?
Sure.
Better have somebody else do it, though.
Do you want to come up, too? Come on, Mother.
You know we're better than we do, so you can get her done.
Neither of them wanted pictures, so.
I, it's a cool thing. I, it's awesome.
Come on, come on.
Don't be my daughter.
Okay, one, two, three. One, two, three. I need one more. Perfect. Thank you.
Hope she had the skinny button on that.
So now you're officially the treasurer.
Well, thank you for being willing, actually, and we look forward to working with you, Kimberly, in that office.
She didn't hear you.
You didn't hear that, did you?
No, that's okay. It's, it's all recorded. You can, you can listen later. Okay, next, have we done everything?
I think so. Sorry, I just.
No, that's good.
Was, it crossed my mind, and I think that was the right thing to do.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we're grateful for our attorneys, our actual attorney, and attorney is Commissioner also. Okay, next item on the agenda, discussion decision on, on the approval of the state contract that includes Natural History Museum. We, we had this for discussion about two or three months ago, kind of let the ball drop a little bit, but talked again with the state governor's office about getting an inclusion that we did not have on the previous agreement. So just real quick background on this agreement, this has to do with our ARPA state matching funds. We had Beth Mitchell from Natural History Museum. She came to Morgan County, came to me and said, hey, can you guys act as a sponsor? I want to see if I can apply and get some dollars to do some work with, through the Natural History Museum with other counties. If you see on the agreement there, it'll be page 142 of the PDF, but they actually now include what the contributing dollar amounts are from each county. And as you can see in there, Morgan County's contributing dollar amount is $1,111. So we will be the sponsor, if you want to say it that way, for, for this project. But Natural History Museum, as they spend the money, they have to submit through us to the state to get the reimbursement, or to go back through us and then back to Natural History Museum. And Garrett, I don't know how many contracts you've reviewed this week, or, but I don't know if you had a chance to look at this or if you had any questions.
I did last time, and the only question I had was it, it was putting, it was saying Morgan was responsible for the entire, so I think the breakout is fine. That was the only issue I had last time.
And that money has, is coming out of ARPA, correct?
Yeah, I, we discussed it in one of our ARPA discussions, I think it was seven or eight months ago, where we said we were good with that amount. Okay, there's no other questions? Look for a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the State of Utah grant agreement, COVID-19 local assistance matching grant program, Governor's Office of Planning and Budget, state year, fiscal year 2022, with funding of $1,111 coming from ARPA.
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner McConnell, second by Commissioner Fackrell. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Unless there's discussions on our ARPA appropriations, I know Mike has a spreadsheet, and, or sorry, Commissioner Newton has a spreadsheet, and he's been working with Commissioner Fackrell on this, but unless you guys would like to discuss anything, I recommend we postpone this till next meeting.
I would agree.
So moved. Okay.
Second.
All right.
Do you want to call that?
Yeah, sorry. There's a motion that we postpone this until next meeting by Commissioner McConnell, second by Commissioner Wilson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, on to public hearings. Thank you for those who need to be here for this and for hanging in there. We usually have staff that discusses these public hearings before we go into adjourn, adjourn from a public meeting and into convening to a public hearing. I don't know what we want to do, or we don't have the staff to discuss this. I don't see Bailey here.
I think we can just turn it to the applicant from my perspective.
Okay.
And, and I will say with respect to the comment and public comment, that I agree, we need, we need to be a little more detailed in what we notice up in our agenda with respect to a zone change.
We usually are when that's what's doing it. I received these from Bailey, and I think she's.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to identify what the target zone is.
Agreed.
Probably an address for the property.
Agreed. So with that said, before we adjourn public meeting and convene public hearing, let's, if you wouldn't mind hearing from the applicant, Todd, if you want to just give us a quick background of, of the, what you're proposing?
So do you guys have the map or anything?
We do. Yeah, we, we have a staff report and the recommendation and so forth, so.
Yep.
So I am the owner of the property, and we've considered subdividing a piece. We started looking at the zoning, the R1 zoning, and it was so shallow, it was going to force us to add additional property to the two homes that I have there, plus have, which would be more than 200 feet of frontage. So what we'd like to do is extend that back to make it, we'll have the ability to actually put houses on 200 feet of frontage instead of 250 or 300 feet. And I own the property behind it, to the side of it, and if that is something you guys would approve, that would be great, and we can proceed with that.
I have a question for you.
Okay.
After reviewing it, I, I noticed that you, at one point, it says that you're going to add an additional two acres approximately into the RR1. The rest of it's going to stay at the A20.
Yes.
But to, and I'm not sure on this, maybe, maybe Debbie can help me on it, but when you, you've got an additional 13, you've got, you're putting in two bigger-sized lots back in the back A20 zone, yet it doesn't meet A20 requirements and/or the, I thought it was 300 feet you had to have for A20 for a frontage. So how does it qualify for an RR1?
So do you see the dash line in that map that you're looking at?
Yeah.
You see, he's got RR1 on the frontage of each of those lots, including Lot 3 and Lot 4.
Right.
And then he's got in the back the A20 line, so the lots are split in terms of the zoning. So I think what the position is, is that if they zone in the front of them to the RR1, then that will be the applicable requirement for the street frontage, even though the back part of the lot is, still remains in the A20.
And that's how they did mine across the street.
Oh, okay, all right.
And it is 203.
Yeah, so basically then you've got roads coming back there, and I don't think those roads are really it, because you've got the frontage on the front. Is that correct?
But, well, the, the frontage is, is this roadway right here.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Okay, can I actually look for a motion, if you don't mind, Commissioners? We can open this for a public hearing, and then we can.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the public meeting and convene a public hearing.
Okay, motion by Commissioner McConnell. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Wilson. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, this is open for public comment. As mentioned previously, this is, would be public comments for this zone map change or request, for those that are here in the public that would like to make a comment to that. The time is yours. We'll give, give a minute, see if anybody has any comments. Okay, seeing none?
Move that we go out of public hearing.
Got a motion to adjourn public hearing, we can convene public meeting. Second, second, Commissioner McConnell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, any further discussions for, for Todd? Okay, look for, look for a motion.
Page 158.
Oh, heavens. 158?
Yeah.
It's, you want me to?
I recommend.
Go ahead.
Either one, I'll do it, or he can.
I move to approve the Crowther rezone map amendment, application number 22.031, extending the RR-1 zone a total depth of 220 feet from Morgan Valley Drive based on the findings listed in the staff report due to, dated June 7th, 2022.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Wilson, second by Commissioner Fackrell. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll step out for this one.
Next item for public hearing, we have a proposed amendment to a zone map in Mountain Green. Ray Nettleton?
Yeah, so my name's Ray Nettleton, live in Kaysville. I'm representing MCC LLC, which is the family entity that owns the Pincusaka property there, just east of the Cottonwoods. We have 2,000 acres there, approximately. We're asking for a rezone on part, part of it that is, is on the F1 forestry, 1,098 acres, approximately 800, well, the remainder, yeah, the remainder of it is already in the ME160 zone. So just, just a couple things. We've got the positive staff recommendation and the, the planning commission approval. One thing, if you, if you look on the county zoning map and all the properties adjacent to either medium or a higher density, there's always seems to be a buffer of, you know, kind of transitions to this ME160. For some reason, in this particular spot, it goes straight from, you know, high-density gardener, you know, the, the cottonwood development agreement, straight to F1, and usually it's a full hundred, or, you know, section and a half of, of transition space. And it sounds like a lot of acreage, but it really, it really just boils down to the potential to put, you know, up to six single-family residents on that whole 1,098 acres, and, and there would all be, at the, the west perimeter of the property, you know, I don't know, our neighbors aren't here yet, but, aren't here, but, you know, we've, we've kind of been working out with them what that would look like, and, and they're, they're in favor of what we're proposing. I just also wanted to address the, some comments that are kind of, I don't know, may have been misconstrued from the last meeting, and said that we would not be back before the county commission and, and to request additional changes to the land use general plan, and that's, that remains true. We, we stated before that over 98% of this 2,000-acre property won't be developed, and, and that's still, that's still true, even with this, this reasonable application, because just the way the urban fire ordinance are, and the subdivision, and the driveways and all that, it's really, anything that we do would be just right on the edge of our property anyway, and not on the interior of the property. The interior is very steep and is not accessible by roads, so just wanted to, you know, if anyone was concerned about that. Again, and again, we've been discussing with our neighbors where, where these potential home sites might be. That's part of the subdivision process, you know, and all the stipulations that come with that. So just to keep it simple, we're just, we're just asking for the rezone of that 1,098 tonight, and we'll address the rest later.
What's your main purpose in doing this?
It does open up the potential for six family lots on the land that, that's been owned by the Haley-Barnes family for 80, 90 years.
So, so this part here, where you've got the 1,098 acres that you want to take from F1 to ME160, if you already have the six homes that you want to put in this other area, why do you want to put it, why do you want to change that?
Well, it would make, there would be five, I think, in the spot. There's like the 800 in the, and then in the acres roughly, and it's already in ME60, so this would add the potential for six additional.
So, so your plan is to put one house per 160 acres?
Correct.
Or are you trying to do it more centralized?
Well, if the, if there is a PRUD ordinance, and it does make sense to have a, a cluster of a home with, with, you know, land radiating out, we, we've discussed as a family putting, you know, if we, if we did some kind of subdivision, we would put the majority of land in a common open space without fence. I mean, that's the direction we intend to, right now we lease it to a sheep rancher, and that's still the intent, even if homes are built, because the vast majority of the property would, would remain unchanged. Does that answer your question?
Well, yeah, that answers my question. I'm just kind of curious as to why we need to, I mean, I don't know where the homes are going to be located. gonna be located, or, I mean, because you've got the property to the south, that is part of it, and I know you came before us once before, didn't you?
Yep, that was for the, the, there's a very, the, there's a section in the south of the property that's very flat, very similar to the land that's already in the, in the Cottonwood Development Agreement, and it's on, it hasn't been rezoned, but it's in the, in the future planning map for RR1. But that's probably 10-plus years out, I mean, the neighbor has no, no real plans for developing, so it's just gonna sit there.
I'm just trying to figure out why we need the 160 through the rest of it. If you're planning on putting your houses in the other area, I guess I could put it up on the map. Let me see if I can do that. If anybody wants to see it, see if I can do it.
Do you project it up there?
Yeah, I could project it up there.
You need to turn it on?
I'm gonna try. Oh, I don't need to turn that on, I can just do it. You've got to turn on the projector. Projector, yes. And I can project it up there. There, drop. Of course, Jeremy, he's not here, so I can't do it, probably. Let me see. Oh, there we, nope, it's not. Not yet, I'm trying to, trying to figure out this computer. Yeah, but mine's not on there. Is it on Bluetooth? There it is, right there, Apple.
I remember it being this area.
Where is the Apple? Jeremy, where are you, when I need you?
Jeremy said make sure the input to the HDMI is charged, to save it back into.
You, I have a pretty big amount of.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, because I don't have, what did he say to do?
Make sure that input to HDMI.
Okay, he's got that, but I can do it through the Apple, but I don't know exactly how I do it, asking. Because I can do it from my phone, on my computer, if it will pick it up. Yeah, he's got it into his, but I can do it through the Apple device, the Apple TV. No, no, I can do it from here, and it goes straight to there, if it's plugged back in, but I have to have, I'm sure it's true, Bluetooth, but anyway, it's okay. I can kind of explain it, there we go.
Oh, there we go.
Okay, good. So is your, your plan then basically is to, I mean, I just, I'm not seeing why you would need to change an F1 zone to an MU160 if you're planning on, unless you're planning on putting in homes all over the 1,098 acres?
Yeah, essentially, that is correct. We do want to put 11 homes divided by the, by the 2,000 acres, or, or six homes divided by 1,098, which is, that's the 101 lot per 160 acres.
Commissioner Anderson, can I ask for some assistance from Debbie Sessions?
Let's, before we do that, and I think we can finish, but let's just hurry, and this is a public hearing, so let's just, if you wouldn't mind, let's move forward with the.
Go ahead.
Motion to adjourn a public meeting and convene a public hearing, just to see if there's any public input, and then, then we'll come back and finish the discussion.
I move to go into public hearing.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Fackrell to adjourn public meeting, convene public hearing.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wilson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, if, I don't want to go into too much detail, but if there's any comments by the public, then for this specific zone request, then feel free to come forward and state your name. Okay, seeing, oh, we do have one.
I'm curious, because I drive school bus up there. So you said, last week, or two weeks ago, you said it was only gonna be five houses, and now it's moving on to 11 houses, and you keep saying, I'm not gonna build any more than that, not gonna go any further, you, now you're moving on more houses.
Let's, let me restate that, so that's.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you don't go back and forth, it's just a public comment, we'll take it.
Yeah, anyway. Anyway. We have, my bus is 90% full with kids up there. We have hardly any bus drivers. We really, that place up there has developed so much, I just wanted to put that thought in the mind.
Thank you for, for your comment. And Tammy, Tammy Crowther for the record, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
What was it, Tammy?
Tammy Crowther.
Okay.
Debbie Sessions, and maybe to anticipate, I'll speak as public, to anticipate blame. MU160, you can have single-family residence, F1 you cannot, only cabins. So that would be to change, and you can put the home anywhere on the 160, but for infrastructure, they would put them probably closer to the current development, but they can put it anywhere on the 160. But you can't have single-family home in F1, just cabins.
Thank you, is there any other public comment? Okay, look for a motion to adjourn public hearing, reconvene public meeting?
Go ahead.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Fackrell, second by Commissioner Wilson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, sorry about that, I just wanted to make sure we got through the public hearing, and before we finalize discussions, the one thought I have on, on the comment, but it's 1,098 acres, MU160 means a house per 160 acres, correct? So 1,098 divided by 160 allows you up to six, but not seven. So I want to make sure that's clear, we can't, we can't just keep throwing numbers out there, wherever they may be coming from, they might not be coming from you, but, but that, that's how it would work, and I, I do appreciate the staff, the work they do, and the findings that they have, have included in this, so that's all I've got.
Okay, my only thought, sorry, this is just me personally, and I'm sure there's a lot of residents that are this way, and I know Commissioner Wilson is against this, I mean, he wants it, but anyway.
Are you speaking for me now, too?
Yep, I am, okay, and I'll continue. If we end up having a house on 160, and another house on another 160, we're dotting ourselves all over this county, from here to Timbuktu, and I agree, you can do that, but I'm having a heartburn about the fact that we're gonna be putting houses all over Kingdom Come. Now, if we can somehow get it to where we've got it within the code, to where we are centralizing those homes, not saying you have to have it within a half an acre of each other, but this is just my personal opinion, because I've seen how growth happens. I've seen it, I worked in, lived in Bow for a while, worked in Centerville, it used to be a farming community, Farmington used to be a farming community, Morgan used to be a completely farming community, and it's no longer that. We're trying to keep as much of it as we can, but I'm just saying that I don't want to see, and I saw Bittona Ranch over in Park City when I delivered that, you, all of a sudden you start putting that home here, and a home here, and a home here, and we got homes all over the place again. And sure, you have that property right. I'm just opposed to having homes dotted all over this county. Anyway, just my opinion. Okay.
My name's Heidi Nettleton, so we own this with the 26 families, Gailey is my maiden name, so it's part of the family, I don't know if you remember from last year, but for some of the things, and I, I completely understand and hear what you're saying, we did a little presentation for the planning, they kind of said, that's too much, you didn't need to do all that, so we kind of went a little less is more here, but I kind of want to just make sure you understand the idea of what we're trying to do, and if you could go back to the rezone part, Ray?
I don't know what the heck is going on.
I don't know where we got one. That's good.
That's, that's okay, I can kind of get it there. But, so this is all in the F1 right now. We have, this, this is the lower part we own down here, part of the 2,000 acres is in the MU160. So what we were trying to do is rezone this, this can remain in the F1 because it's way up high, rezone this, so, and I understand what you're saying about the dotted, which is not what we want either. We've been working with a lot of the neighbors along the Cottonwoods here for access points, so right now, with, there's no PRUD, we, we can't really do that, we would entertain that in the future, but with this, we could put one here, or one here, but it would just be along this edge, or, because really you can't go more than whatever the fire, the 1,000 feet, and then they would own it, the plan is that they would own that collectively, no fencing, the sheep would still be there. We've talked, we've, we've only talked once, but we've had an initial meeting with the Utah, help me with the name, right, Utah Open Lands?
Yeah.
To put a conservation easement on basically the whole upper portion. So I feel like our, our plan and our ideas would align with what you were also trying to preserve, I guess, while still giving us the right to develop a few lots, and either for family or selling them along that perimeter. So we're just trying to say, hey, this, that, the zoning up until ours is pretty high density, I mean, I, what, I don't know what they're, what are they doing, half acre lots, quarter acre lots in there? And then it goes straight to forestry, where we can only put, you know, a cabin. So I feel like our, we're more aligned than, than I think maybe initially thought. So I just wanted to kind of explain that a little bit better. In some instances, we're even thinking, working with some of those landowners in those Cottonwoods, where actually the building lot would be in, would be one of those lots, but it would extend, you know, they would also purchase a lot, a lot in our area that they would own collectively with the other owners, you know, as part of an HOA, that kind of thing.
So where do we come in the, with the maybe this many, maybe that many? Why, 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 I just would like you to be forthright and say, look, this is our plan.
Well, I, well, we would love to look at the whole piece all at once and come in and say, let's do all this, but we have all these different zones, so what he was trying to say, I think where the miscommunication got was rezoning, what we're asking the rezone for, from the F1 to the M60, we could get six, we can also get another six.
Five.
Another five, excuse me, on the lower portion that's already zoned MU160.
The mouth is the mouth, it's not you.
So we're, we're speaking to the piece that we're trying to rezone now, but.
So you're also, you're also expanding your lower portion and putting more houses in there.
We're not expanding it, that was already zoned.
That's, that's already zoned, where are we?
What were you saying?
It's down lower.
We could get five more lots if we did it.
That's on our lower, the lower piece that's already zoned MU160.
Sorry, this, this, this piece here is already zoned MU160.
Correct.
As I was saying, all these other lands adjacent here, they have a full, you know, section and a half of MU160, for some reason, this little section here, it went straight from RR1 to F1. Again, as I said, we, these are literally, if we do a house, it'll literally be on the border within 100 feet, 102, it's not gonna, it's not gonna be.
Well, it can.
Off the mountain.
So I'm trying to figure out how you're saying six, but then you're expanding it to a level.
Six we could already get in the MU160. If we rezone this, we can get another six, so total of 12, but right now, what's come before you is the, is the rezone. It's only a portion of the overall.
Yeah, I guess the thought I have is it's, from what I'm looking at on that map, it is actually quite consistent with what we've got there. I just did a quick, consistent with the MU160 zone. If you look at the color of the MU160 zone, I did a quick calculation on the north there, and there's 9,600 acres in MU160. I'd be interested to see how many homes we have in that area. I'm not sure we have one residential in that area, but yet we have 9,600 MU acres of MU160 acres. So the point that I'm making is, is it's been allowed in the past, from what I'm seeing, it's, it's, what you're asking is consistent with what's been allowed in the past, and for me anyways, if I see something that's extremely out of the ordinary, that, that'd be one thing, but I'm just, I'm not seeing it. Good luck putting a home on 160 acres and getting utilities to it without it being extremely expensive. It sounds like you guys got plans in place, hopefully it'll work for you, but I do think it's consistent with what you are seeing, with what I'm seeing, so those are my thoughts.
I just couldn't figure out why you needed all of it to be done that way, but it's fine, I mean, I can see it this way, and people have talked to me about it. You put a house here, and then eventually you're gonna take that 160 acres, and you're gonna ask for a rezone, put it down to a R10, so they can have a 10 acre lot, and now we've all of a sudden got homes all over the place. So that's my concern, is I just don't want to see homes dotted all over this county. I know some people do. Some people would rather have that than they would have the communities in little areas, but, and have the open space in the rest of the county. I personally, I've seen.
Contours don't allow it.
Yeah, I know, but I've seen it, I've seen it happen. I've seen it happen in Promontory, I saw it in Bittona Ranch, I saw it in Silver Creek Junction, I saw it in Prom, or Tollgate, I've seen it every, many, many places, I saw it in Bountiful, Farmington. I've been around a long time. I've seen this happen, and I, for my grandchildren that want to stay here, and your grandchildren that might want to stay here, you know, I'm just saying, all of a sudden, we're gonna have a city of homes because we're not protecting that 160 or that F1, I don't care if it's 160 or whatever, I'm just saying, I don't want to see you come back in 10 years from now and say, I want to take this 160 acre, this MU160, and change it to something else. And I may be totally up in the night, but I just, I don't want to see that. In 25 years, or 30 years, you guys can do what you want, because I won't be around.
Well, that's real thoughtful.
Well, I know, I'll be close to 100, so that's okay.
I understand that.
But I'm just saying, I'm saying, you know, you guys have preserved your land for this long, why now, other than the fact you want a place for each of the family members to be, which is good, I like that, but I just.
Why now is because the Cottonwoods, which is the city you're talking about.
Yeah, that's the city.
It's built right up to us.
Built right up to us, but we are not, we are not the Cottonwoods.
Right.
So why now is because, and we've been consistent saying, we never imagined, you know, we can go back, we can go back 10, 15 years, when my dad spoke in public meetings saying, you know, we anticipate, you know, up to 20 houses up there along that, you know, or, you know, he, we were never in the high density, so.
But why are you here, back here in a year? I guess that's my question.
Because we will be built up against and not have access, so we're trying to secure some access and a couple building lots, that's.
And the six isn't sufficient for you?
The six down lower?
Yeah.
We would just like the option, because.
You said you weren't, you weren't gonna ask for any more last time, I'm just.
That was, that was the flumo request.
That was the, the play.
Future land use, yes.
Yeah, you're concerned that we're gonna ask for the rezone of the MU160 to RR10?
Whatever it is, or five.
That would, that would require a future land use map, and we've, we've said we won't come back for one, but also, the land is not consistent with that, it's too steep, you cannot build roads on there. A road at that step, you would, you would be $3 million per mile, you know, our property's two miles deep, it would just wouldn't, it would never pencil, and we don't want to do it, it'd just be too much, it'd be, whatever we're gonna do. It'd be, whatever we're going to do, what little we're proposing is right on the perimeter. We're literally talking about purchasing land that's already in the Cotton Woods Development Agreement and placing the house there because it's too steep. You just can't do it. The ordinance for the urban fire and the driveways and the slopes, you can't, it won't look like Los Angeles Peaks. It will be right, it will be right there on the very perimeter. It'll just, they'll blend right in.
Okay, can you promise me that you're not going to come back in 15 years, 10 years?
We're proposing to you.
It's in two meetings.
As a, as a citizen of this county?
He actually went back and looked at the meetings to double check what he said, just to, just to, just to check himself.
We will not ask for Fluma, another Fluma request on this property. So, there will never be, besides that one little section on the south end, there will not be any lots less than 160. And of those building lots, they're right next to the Cotton Woods Development.
Okay.
And, and also, we don't have a set plan yet. This, this, it could be, it could be six.
We will be back here.
It could be six, yeah.
For subdivision. You'll have, you'll have an opportunity to comment on, on any subdivision plot. And we're talking about coming back when we figure out what's going on with, on the south side of our property. We can talk about coming back with Ted Taylor. And doing a, doing a, more of a development agreement on that portion. But again, these are just a couple houses right tucked in next, right next to, to the Cottonwood Development.
And the view should would be preserved up there.
Okay, I move to approve the Nettleton rezone map amendment, application number 22.026, changing the zoning district from F1 to MU160 based on the findings listed in the staff report dated June 7th, 2022.
Okay, we have a motion. Garrett, with there being three of us, can I make a second?
No.
Then how do we move forward?
I will make a second.
Just waiting.
You were forcing me into it, so we'll do it that way. It's fine with me.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah, because I've got their word. And you know what? I still trust people by word, even though I got screwed.
Okay, we've got, we've got a motion by, got a motion by Commissioner Wilson, second by Commissioner Fackrell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for your time and going through all these difficult decisions.
I'm sorry you guys had to wait here so long to be able to hear me vent my complaints.
Okay, we've got one more, and got to apologize the most for the person that has waited the longest. But if you wouldn't mind, I gotta, I hope I don't say it incorrectly. Is it Aleka?
Aleka.
Aleka. Aleka, if you wouldn't mind coming and letting in a snail what you plan on doing.
I wish you would have stayed in here and assisted me in trying to understand it all.
Oh, I apologize, Commissioner McConnell. I had to make sure you were, I'm glad you came back in. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so I'm Aleka Murphy. So, right now, I'm planning consulting for the planning department since they're understaffed, so just helping with reviews. So, for this code amendment, the planning commission directed.
Sorry, Aleka, this is on. We just got to turn it off.
Oh, is it? I was expecting.
TV, but it's not mine.
I don't have your stuff. Stranger Things.
Thank you.
That's a bad omen.
Oh, my gosh. So, the planning commission directed the planning staff to amend the family food production code to allow for the keeping of animals in the R120 zones and smaller. Currently, the code only allows animals in the RR1 or larger zone. But it was discovered that there's several lots in the R120 zone that are more than one acre in size. So, it limits them to have the animals in there. So, the thought was that the allowance of animals should be based on the area that the resident has and not necessarily the zoning. Morgan County currently uses family food production to identify the limits and requirements for the keeping of animals. Staff proposed to eliminate the two definitions of the family food production and add the definition of farm animal and change the use tables in the larger and smaller zones. The commission held a couple work sessions to discuss possible options to allow farm animals in residential zones. So, there were two public hearings on April 28th and on May 12th for the code amendment, where several changes were discussed. And then the draft ordinance is part of the staff report right now. So, yeah, anything that's folded on there is the changes that were discussed. So, there's a new definition for farm animals on there. As far as the 8583 table, I believe the only change there is adding raising, agriculture including raising, grazing, pastoring of animals. And for 85B3, we added the agriculture, including grazing and pasturing of animals, the tilling of the soil, the regen of crop, and gardening. And then 8646 is the new section that's being proposed. And then Section A, it talks about lots that are one acre or larger. And Section B talks about the lots that are 20,000 square feet or larger. So, yeah, guess, any questions?
So, if somebody tell me 2120, or 120, is up to 20,000 square feet for a lot? What size is that? Half acre?
That's about, yeah.
It's just shy of a half.
But there are many lots that fall in that zone that have more than 20,000.
So, if somebody has, if an HOA allows them to have chickens, and they are in a place that is under 20,000, are we going to change the code for that at all? I mean, can it be reduced? I'm just, I've had people concerned come to me and say, "Hey, I moved from Centerville, or from Riverdale, where we could go and have chickens in our backyard." But yet, they moved up here, and their HOA says, "Yeah, you can have them." But the county says, "No, because they're not over 20,000 square feet." So, they're just barely under 20,000 square feet. Is there a variance or something that they can come in and ask for? Because, I mean, in Riverdale, I guess they have them on quarter acre lots. I don't know. But I just think, I mean, I'd like to have chickens, if I had a small acreage. I'd love to have chickens on a small.
Can we say for up to every 20,000?
Up to, up to 20,000? You mean between 0 and 20? Because you can't do that.
Yeah, you can't do what?
You don't want it on like a townhome size lot.
Yeah, you don't want it.
I mean, I get it. Some people like to have animals, and other people don't like to live immediately adjacent to them. Right.
And they, I mean, if the HOA says you can do it, then why can't the person? I mean, this is in Whisper Ridge. Their Whisper Ridge HOA does not have, I mean, they don't have an ordinance against it. But their lots are just barely under 20,000.
And, and this is recommending 20,000 or more?
That's right. And so, what I'm saying is, is can we bring it down in amount?
Yeah. We're the legislative body if you want to reduce it.
Well, the increments are 10,000 after that. You want to go down to 10,000.
Well, that's a quarter acre lot. I don't care. Because, I mean, according to these rules that we have in here, it basically restricts them anyway.
If you do, if you do that, does that include, but? Do you want to reduce the number of animals?
No, roosters are not allowed.
Roosters can't be.
Roosters you shouldn't even have, in my opinion. That would be shot.
But you have a half an acre, and you're allowed 25 chickens. That's a lot of chickens.
Yeah, that's a lot of chickens.
That's way a lot of chickens.
That's a lot of chickens. I mean, I mean, the reduction would be nice to be able to even, I mean, I can see.
I mean, a family could live on the eggs of five chickens, I think. If you're going to reduce the size of the lots, then you're going to have to also consider the number of animals.
Yes.
I agree.
I agree with that, totally. Can we go and ask for this to be maybe revised, or can we do, can we do it ourselves? I mean, we're the legislative body. I guess we can.
Yeah, you can do it, but I think, I mean, the planning commission, it sounds like the planning commission wanted to do this and has worked through it pretty carefully, so.
But I would like to see it go down to a smaller amount and a smaller people, or smaller people, smaller animal, I mean, smaller amount of quantity.
Are you going to make them fence in?
Yeah, they have to. According to this, they have to.
So, if that's your recommendation, then I guess we could refer it back, or we, or we need to to make some specific recommendations. And like I said, if you're going to reduce the lot sizes, then I think we need to think through what those things are. Whether we do that tonight or at the next meeting, it's up to you, I guess.
Yeah, well, I'd be glad to work with our planning department.
I think we ought to look at it. I mean, I mean, personally, I think, you know, prophets have told us, and I'd hate to bring religion in here, but separation of state.
He just did.
I mean, we need to be cognizant of being self-sufficient. And, and some people are concerned about that. I know, I know there are lots of people that are concerned about it, that want a garden and a couple of animals to, I mean, I know we have to, you can't put a Hereford on the townhome.
No, you couldn't even put a miniature Hereford there. But I mean, there can be, as a boy. I used to raise 150 rabbits in Doze.
You need to write a book.
What have you not done, Tony?
I don't know. Shall I start at all? No, seriously, I had, I did. We did 150 rabbits in a boundary.
I want it to be done by 9:30. That's all that matters. I know you're only your 60s.
I'm sorry, I've done a lot in my life. Okay? But no, I did rabbits, and you can have them in a smaller area that do not take up much room, and you're not sending them out, but you can, you can raise rabbits in a smaller area. Chickens are a little harder unless you keep them penned up.
Yeah.
Ducks, wow. That's another thing.
So, the only other comment I would have would be the end of number two, where it says on page number 181, end of number two, where it says, "Animals and fowl not specifically listed may be substituted for those listed of similar size." Who determines the similar size scenario? And is that something that, because I know we've got an animal enforcement person. Does he, does he go out and say, "Hey, no, I think that's a bigger pig than a sheep"? I don't know how that all works, but.
Yeah.
You need to have somebody in agriculture, in smaller agriculture, look at it. How about the extension service?
Do you know what the thoughts were on that statement? But, okay.
We can ask Daddy.
Yeah, I think otherwise, it's left to the applicant owner as to what constitutes a reasonable substitute if you don't put in a standard or have a determinant, identify the party that's. Why don't we let Blaine work with the Planning and Zoning Committee and come up with something? So, do you want to open the public hearing and have the public hearing on this prior?
Yes, I do. Sorry, we haven't got there yet.
So, I'll make a motion to close the public meeting and open a public hearing.
We can do tomorrow. We have to relax.
Motion by, motion by Commissioner McConnell to adjourn public meeting, convene public hearing, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it's now open for public comments. And with the discussion we've had up to this point, I would love to hear some public comments.
My iPad's down to like 3% files. Tina Kelly, Mountain Green. I talked in the planning commission about this first before it dies. The summary says, "The planning commission directed planning staff to amend the family food production code to allow for the keeping of animals in R120 zones and smaller." I disagree with that. There was a person who was in violation of the code, and he wanted to have a code amendment. He didn't make an application. There was some discussion in the planning commission, but it was not directed to make this change. Staff brought the code amendment to the planning commission, not the other way around. And there's been a lot of fun discussions over it, whether, if a person is in violation and wants a change, then that person should make an application to amend the code, not using the expense and time of public funds and staff. The other thing, I've kind of lost my, my train of thought, except that really is it. Why are we doing this if there was one person in violation of the code? If there were 20 people in violation of the code, and you could foresee a change? And even that person was at the planning commission meeting last time, and he wasn't even agreeable to this change. He wanted a better, more amenable change to his, as a solution to his problem, because he's in violation. It's just.
So, you're saying that was only one person in our whole county?
That had the violation and came in and discussed it with the, with the, with the staff.
But we don't know if more people were in violation or not. It's just that this one was aware.
I know this will make more people in violation, because I know a lot of people who are raising chickens for food source. And I'm afraid that the way you guys keep tweeting, or not you guys, but the planning commission, the staff, now you guys are seeing it, and you've got a different interpretation. I'm afraid more people are going to be hurt by the changes than the person who was hurt by the code as it existed. So, if you're going to have good discussions, let them be good discussions and for good reasons. But don't hurt the community at large while you're trying to fix one, one problem.
So, is this not more flexible than what we have right now? I thought it was more flexible.
I thought it was, too.
I don't think it is for the chickens. And it's hard to say, because everything changes each time the planning commission sees it.
I guess I need to see them side by side.
And I apologize, we kind of broke the standard of public comment, but, but, that's okay.
It's after 9 o'clock.
It's after 9 o'clock.
I do appreciate that. And if you're going to make the change, make sure it's a good change and not a bad one.
I can agree.
I think we had a place for him.
He wants to talk.
Might as well.
Right now, it's in a gift occasional, we got a 12, 12,000 square foot lot, and we have the chickens. They're fun, and they're not too noisy. No roosters. There we go.
Thank you.
We give our, we give the heck away to our neighbors and.
Code violation.
Thank you.
This wasn't repentant, was it?
Thank you for that comment. Any other public comment? Okay, look for a motion to adjourn public hearing or convene public meeting.
So, that's so rude.
Okay, my motion by Commissioner Wilson, second by Commissioner McConnell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
So, can I speak to it? If, if that's the case, that it wasn't suggested by the planning commission, that's, that kind of relates to Action Item 6 as well, is that staff can't in and of themselves present an amendment to the title and zoning map. In Morgan County Code 8-3-3, it says, "The county council may amend this title, including the zoning map, but only in accordance with the following procedure." And then it outlines that the county council may instruct staff to study and make recommendations. The next one says, "The planning commission may instruct staff to study and make recommendations." And then the last one says, "Any property owner may initiate an amendment to this title or the zoning map, as long as they are affected by the proposed amendment by submitting a complete application," and so on and so forth. So, if what Tina said about the procedure is in fact accurate, then it's not in compliance with our code, and we'd have to go back to the drawing board. Or, just at this meeting, the county commission can direct staff to do it, and then we move forward. But if that box hasn't been checked, then it's not, it's not appropriate, and it would have to go back to the planning commission anyway.
It kind of sounded like we were given direction for Commissioner Fackrell to talk to staff anyways, weren't we?
Yeah, so let's make, I'll move that, that we, yeah, but I can't nominate myself, can I?
But then it, but then it would also, so it does say, "The county council may instruct staff to study, make recommendations for amendments to this title or the zoning map in response to changes in policy or conditions generally within the county. Staff shall forward a recommendation, a recommended amendment to the planning commission." staff shall forward a recommendation, a recommended amendment to the Planning Commission for their consideration. So, it would still go back to the planning, even if this body recommends to staff to do that, just to-
So, that means it's-
To follow our code.
But it'd be, you know, basically, we'd have to have it for them for the next meeting, I guess. I don't know when they do it. And then we would have it come back. I don't know when, how you do it.
Well, I think based on what Tina said, I think that's really important, that this, this, if we're gonna change something, that it becomes a better situation, not, not worse.
Agreed.
Yeah.
I agree. I agree a hundred percent.
So, what's the motion, Robert?
Put two of us in charge of it.
So, I'll make a motion that we postpone this matter and direct staff to work with Commissioner Fackrell and the Planning Commission to more fully evaluate the proposed code amendment and to bring it back to us following that, um, evaluation process with the recommendation from the Planning Commission.
I'll second it.
Hey, we got a motion by Commissioner McConnell, second by Commissioner Fackrell. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion passes.
I would look at that substitution item carefully. Substituting an animal, I think we have to have someone in the county that makes-
Yeah, right.
That determination, you know.
Well, I actually-
Water buffalo similar to a bull by, I'm not sure.
And that's where I think I know that stuff.
And now, like, I don't think there's gonna be a whole lot of changes. I think it's just clarifications. I do think if we can define things better, that's gonna make it better, but we gotta be cognizant that we're not making it worse, agreed, with public comment.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
I can agree.
Okay, next item on the agenda, um, Commissioner comments. Commissioner Fackrell, we'll start with you.
Well, you've heard a lot from me tonight. Uh, just to give you an update, the Trails, um, Plan, they're doing a Trails, um, with the group, Fears and Peers. Name's, name of Tim, Tim Barry. Anyway, they're, he's coming to, coming to do a countywide, um, drive-through, except it's gonna be a walk-through, drive-through, and everything else in between for the Trails. That'll be next Fri- or not next Friday, the seventeenth. So, if anybody wants to join that, they can. It's Friday. And, uh, everything else is moving as fast as we can get it to move.
Okay.
Um, so with respect to the airport, um, I sent in the invoices submitted by the contractor thus far for payment. I did confirm that they didn't include any of the change orders that we had approved. Um, we got back a proposal from Wasatch Civil and the contractor to, to finish that out. And the net cost increase is twenty-one four oh seven, so significantly lower than what it was originally.
Didn't they say seventy?
Mm-hmm. And we can talk to Wasatch Civil about what portion of that they're going to cover. Um, but I'd like to authorize finishing it, so that that gets done, and then if you want me to, I'll talk to Wasatch Civil about that and see what we can come up with in terms of whatever you want me to try to do. Split it, try to get them to take all of it. So, I'm, I'm probably inclined to split, but-
That's what I would be. Kind of always-
Yep, agree with you.
And then-
Can I, can I make a comment there, Robert?
Yeah.
Um, so, um, the foundation guys that we've been using, Family has a rock crushing, a rock crusher.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I guess, I guess Brett gave them permission to take some and crush it.
And take it off-site?
Some of what?
And took it off, take it off-site and crush it. And, um, the gravel it produced was actually one-inch rock, and it was, it was pretty nice rock, you know? Um, and he was talking about bringing his crusher on-site and crushing all that, and, and we, and we had to cut down a lot on the waste, you know? I don't know if we can, what negotiation might be able, I, I told John Cannon, who, who talked to Brett, and Brett just gave permission. I just said, you know, I, this really ought to run, run through the commission anyway, just to, and I don't know, it might be financially beneficial to everyone to have them come on-site, crush it, sell the rock. We end up with a lot less, and maybe they pay us some for rock. I don't know.
Well, and that gets rid of, I mean, you could even just crush it and have them remove it, so that we don't have to pay to remove the overburden.
If it crushes to a material they can use, I mean, you might have contractors willing to haul it off for free.
Yeah.
And, and Brett might be able to use it in some of his road projects. I don't know.
I just want to be, crushing's a loud operation, so you kind of got a, a fine point between where the neighbor's immediately adjacent to the airport, and then you have the Fox Hollow run, and then you get into the Cotton Woods. We'd have to be careful. I don't know just how loud that would be, and how long it would take. I'd want to understand that before we-
Okay.
I mean, I think as a temporary thing that would get rid of all that overburden, and where we don't have to pay it, or, or it's usable for the county, that's not a bad idea.
All right, I'll talk to, I'll talk to Brett, so he doesn't just give permission for stuff before I know it by.
Um, with respect to the potential commercial leases, nine lines, I, I did some looking around. I got a couple quotes from people that just seemed high to me, so I just went into our system where we store all our documents produced by the various lawyers in the firm, and looked up a number of ground leases and just checked the rate. And it ranged from frankly fifty-five cents a square foot up to three dollars and fifty. Now, the three fifty is for high-end, in a high-end retail center, so it's like not even comparable. Um, I talked to Joe, and he, the Joe Garfield, and he's like, well, yeah, maybe that's appropriate for their footprint, but, you know, I don't think you should charge that fifty-five cents a square foot for just that area on the aprons and stuff like that. So, I, I know that's what's kind of been one of the things we're working with them on rate in terms of the leases. So, what would you think about that fifty-five cents a square foot for the pad area, the building pad area for those commercial buildings, and then the standard sixteen cents that we're charging for everybody else on the balance?
So, what do you mean, the sixteen cents on which part of it?
Everything outside of their building footprint, but within their lease premises.
And all that kind of stuff, yeah. Yeah, along the same contract that we did before, where it can raise up three percent here.
Yeah, that's, we're still using this term.
That'll be part of the contract.
Yeah.
It was just determined what-
Nine line would need to agree to it.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that, I'm not sure what that does to their pro forma. I, you know, I, I wouldn't think that if it's just the building pad area, that's going to be that difficult, but-
It's got a pencil.
It does.
It does.
And I, I don't have their pro forma, so I don't know.
And I think it may exclude aprons, taxiways. I, I can look into that, because I don't think any of the other owners are paying for those types of things, so.
They're not paying for those. It's just-
We could just make sure that the agreement clearly outlines-
Yeah, but like the parking areas necessary for their commercial use.
Helipads, parking areas, anything with FBO type thing on the other lease as well.
Right.
So, how big is this building? About nine thousand square feet? Be double the size of-
I don't remember the footprint size of that. I'd have to go back and look at it.
I can't remember. If that's the case, it's about five thousand.
No. So, anyway, that just seemed like a reasonable proposal.
Yep, I agree.
And I, he should be pretty comfortable with it if it's at the bottom end.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, let's, let's do that. Obviously, we can't formally approve that tonight, but we can, we'll draft up the leases in that way.
I think we were just waiting on a few more things to have the conditional use, to have everything come through at the same time, which does bring up another potential, um, area discussion with Brandt and what he would like to do that is in phase one of the airport. So, is that most appropriate to just come through conditional use, or do we amend? And so I'm working with planning on that, and I may reach out to you just to get your thoughts.
Okay. And then, I think everybody knows this, but the, we have the, a planning director hired, and starting later this month. Um, and I confirmed with Julie that she sent letters to the applicants. If any, you know, there were a couple of them that, I was very pleased with the applicants that we got.
Yeah.
And, I mean, I, I think that we did really well in terms of experience with the new director. Um, a couple of the others would be great if they would come for any of our planning positions, but I don't know where we fit at that level with their compensation and so forth, so. And, and it may be good to work with the new planning director on how he wants the department to run. It may be that outsourcing some of that stuff is good, and he can just direct it, so we'll let him get here, and then we'll work on that. But thanks for sending out those letters.
Thank you.
That's all I had.
Okay, thanks, Commissioner McConnell. Um, I've just got a few things to update, uh, UDOT. So, Commissioner Fackrell and I met with UDOT and, um, discussed with them, um, potential studies and locations of studies, but one of the main locations would be between Trapper's Loop and, and the Onramp. And I think I mentioned this before, but they are planning on, um, this year, they, what they said initially next year, and we pushed them a little bit, and they said, okay, this year we're gonna analyze that area of roadway um, between Trapper's Loop and, and the Onramp to see, um, what they could do with, with that and the business of that traffic. So, um, hopefully we'll have that this year from UDOT. Um, Peterson Bridge date is June twentieth that they're planning on reopening, as Brett said, which is ten days ahead of schedule, which is really good. Um, Brett said there's a possibility that the nineteenth it'll open, so.
Great.
He's, he's down to the day. He did say, be careful what you say, though, because we don't know what might come up. Well, unless unforeseen circumstances, it'll, it'll be on the twentieth. Last quick update is we plan to have the restroom by the pickleball courts completed up and running by the end of this month.
Good.
That's all I've got for now.
Do the pickleball courts in the city here get as much use as the ones in Mountain Green? I, and, and I know you, you may not see the Mountain Green ones. So, usually I'll come home in the evening, and they're pretty actively used. I mean, it's, they're just getting into the time when they can use them a lot, but-
I've, I've seen it at times there at the Kent Smith Park. I wouldn't be surprised once we get the power up and going and have a restroom facility. I wouldn't be surprised if they don't use that also quite often. I see them a bit there, using it, but-
So, when, when is that supposed to be done? Because I know we've been working on that for-
When you say that, the restroom?
The elec- electrical and the water out.
So, the electrical is, um, the water. The water is there, so they've already connected the water. The electrical is supposed to be done also this month, so electrical and, and sewer is supposed to be done this month.
Okay, good.
Um, update on the fair. Everything's going good there. We sure have a great fair board. I, they put in a lot of time for donated time. I really, I really, like, every time I go there, I keep thinking, how can we get your end of the valley involved? Because if you can think of anybody that we could pull up that has any influence down there, then it should be nice to have some, some representation from Mountain Green.
Well, you, I mean, you probably do from Peterson and Enterprise, don't you? At least that's towards our end of the world. I, I'll have to think about that in terms of Mountain Green itself. I mean-
I mean, we, I, I hate to use the same people all the time, you know, like Becky Weeks is involved in everything with school and stuff, but I, I just think we could, I, I think it would help if we could involve the Mountain Green area, but-
Yeah, put something in the fair that involves mountain biking or like a bike trail course or something. You might be able to, you might be able to bring them in.
That's not a bad idea. Um, but anyway, that's going, that's going great. John Cannon's been a great addition to work with rodeo people, and so it's much, much smoother than it was. Fire station is moving along. Um, the engineering's all done, and, and Dave Webster's been working with them, with Wasatch and ACS, and so that's moving along, so. Um,
Go ahead.
No, you're not allowed to ask anymore. You've had your turn.
This is not me. I'm just giving a public announcement.
Oh, a public announcement. Um, and they've, they're getting going, they should, they'll have the Bowery Downer Pavilion or whatever you want to call it, that the fairgrounds might add to, so.
Okay. Yeah.
So.
So, are we still doing the, the, uh, whatever they call it, the bowl thingy, the, what was it? Poker, bullpoker?
No, I don't know.
They having us do that again, or put Robert in the middle of the-
That hasn't put a, they, they haven't put that on the schedule yet, so.
No, my other, my other thing was, is as far as the internet goes, just for information for people out in the county, if they're watching this, uh, they now have an additional two towers up, so people on the northern, eastern part of the county can get it from the Clark's Dairy Point or Hill, Hill up there. And also they have one up in the Highway sixty-six that's pointing into the shadows of the other tower. So, if anybody's interested, they can start requesting it.
That's through Liberty.
Through Liberty. Yeah, behind, who knows what they're doing.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Um, I believe we also want to, I, I, what's the right wording for a closed session?
Execute.
Just going to a closed session? Yeah, I look for emotional, emotional request section.
Letication?
Um, and so what's the personnel one?
Character and professional competence of an individual.
Character and personnel.
Shall I make a motion to go into closed session to discuss the character and competence of individuals?
I'll say.
Hey, Commissioner, we've got a motion on the table. Commissioner McConnell, second by Commissioner Wilson. Hall in favor?
Aye.
You gotta roll.
Oh, roll call. Commissioner Fackrell?
Aye.
Commissioner McConnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson votes aye. Commissioner Wilson?